I call to order the open session of the Monday, July 14, 2025, Kent County Board of Education meeting. The first thing I'm asking for is a motion to approve the agenda.
Bring a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Queen has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Miss.
Sorry, I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie seconded. I call, is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Ms. Manley. Alrighty, the next thing. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for the following reasons. Applicants for new hire, personnel applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay, extra duty, and any other personnel matters, including superintendent's evaluation. Public discussion, the reason being public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive personal and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. Second reason, to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice regarding the recent Supreme Court decision in Mahun versus Taylor. The reason being substance of discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. And the third reason is to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice regarding the Chestertown Presbyterian Church Emirandum of Understanding. The reason being the substance of the discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for those reasons.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey has made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Queen has seconded. Is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty, we're going to go into closed session. We should be back at about 6:30.
I'm reporting on closed session. We discussed personnel to be voted on in open session. We received legal advice and we had a personnel update. No decisions were made in closed session. Were the members of the board you see sitting in front of you, Mr. Hushins, the Director/Supervisor of Human Resources, Dr. McComas, and Ms. Manley, the Executive Assistant. As I said, no action was taken in closed session. We are a little shorthanded today. Mr. Rhodes is out of town and Ms. Swanson is out of the state, but she will be back with us in August. So I'm going to ask everybody to stand. And Mr. Queen, would you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Can you do it?
We'll do it together.
Okay, I can do it. Okay, I'll do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Motion to approve?
Yes, Ms. McKenzie has the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Queen has a second. Is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, Ms. Manley. The next thing, public participation. Did anyone sign up, Ms. Manley? Alrighty. So, Dr. McComas, we'll dive right into you, please.
Okay, moving right along here. Great. Couple updates I want to provide, everyone. Our food service program is offering free breakfast and lunch at the following locations. Actually, it's all of our schools except for Garnett, just because we're putting a new walk-in freezer there. And then also at Millington's Fire, Volunteer Fire Department, and Betterton's Fire Department. And along with the free breakfast and lunch at those locations that children and families can access for the children, our Health Department is partnering with us. They were there today and they'll be there providing brochures and flyers for all the services that they offer, trying to get everyone signed up for any healthcare needs. And Chop Tank Health is also offering free physicals for student athletes to be prepared for the fall season. So, wanted to provide that update. Update for our middle school project. I know I had said back in the spring I would bring forward an update. This will be a briefer one than I had originally intended. So, we have been working with the architects every other week for many months now and have been working on the final design. Ms. Report, are you able to put up on the screen? This right now is just the broad footprint of the general design. The easy thing to orient yourself there, of course, is the basketball gymnasium. And you'll see that there are sort of two academic wings that stick out. You can see with classrooms. And then the wing that's opposite the gymnasium is where the cafeteria would be. You'll see that courtyard between the gym and the cafeterias where students can go out for lunchtime. So, this is not a finalized plan, but this is the general footprint of the new building. We have an exciting meeting tomorrow with our commissioners. So, just to go over where we are with pulling together the funding to build a new middle school, we worked with our state delegation. Senator Hershey and Delegate Grace and Jacobs and Aron's worked really hard this year. And while the legislation we put forward did not pass, the General Assembly did hear our advocacy. And the General Assembly designated in this financial year that started July 1st, an extra $150,000 to come to Kent County Public Schools specifically for middle school maintenance to help us offset any costs this year with maintenance. And they put in an additional $8 million to come to us, $4 million in the FY '27 budget and another $4 million in FY '28 budget to help offset the cost of the middle school construction. In addition to that, we worked with the Interagency on School Construction, often referred to as the IAC, and they gave us an additional $3.5 million for a total of $7.5 million to go towards construction for year one of the project. At this point, all of that, you know, we've worked hard to bring together. Tomorrow, we have the opportunity, our Board is meeting as in a joint session with the County Board of Commissioners, 2 o'clock at the middle school tomorrow in the library, to discuss capital projects. And of course, our number one capital project is our middle school. So, I'm hopeful that we have a productive meeting tomorrow with our county commissioners. I think everyone's very excited about this project. And so hopefully, I'll be able to bring back the results of that meeting. I have worked with the architects. They are preparing to do, the architects themselves will come and do a full, much fancier presentation on the new building. We are aiming for September on that because we want to make sure everyone's back from vacation and focused on the school year. So, we thought that would be a good use of the architect's time in September. So, that's our update. So, thank you. I know it wasn't a more developed presentation, but that's exactly where we are. Tomorrow's an exciting day, so.
And just to add, so we're meeting with the commissioners, the 36 district delegation.
Yes.
Maybe the mayor of Chestertown, he knows about it. And it's open to the public if anybody would want to come. It won't be livestreamed, but it will be an open-to-the-public meeting.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to get that out there.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, if we're good, then I'll move on.
Yes, indeed.
Next thing we wanted to do is bring forward proposed dates for Board quarterly work sessions. My understanding is their tradition with the work sessions, that's usually where we have a topic that just is going to involve in-depth conversation and perhaps data review. And so those quarterly work sessions give us a window to kind of go deep on topics. This is just a proposal here. This is a date for each of the quarters. I tentatively propose some topics for some of them, just knowing the time cycle of the year. In September, we've traditionally done the Board Retreat. And in November, we can determine that topic as we get closer in time if we like these dates. March is, of course, we're deep in the budgets session and that's what we, one of our extra budget meetings this year would have been a quarterly work session. And then June, again, that topic can be determined. And these dates are, of course, open to be changed. I was just bringing something for the Board to consider, so.
Yeah, and just to fill in a little bit of gaps. So, the Board Retreat is where we establish, and it'll be the first time for Mr. Queen and Ms. McKenzie, our goals for the superintendent for the year, which are what we will use to evaluate her moving forward. So, just to let you guys know that. And that we had two meetings in February. The second one was devoted to the budget. We had a retreat in April as well. So, and we'll have the other retreat in September. So, the, you know, quarterly does mean four, but it's a, we did not have four last year. We were in the midst of a superintendent search and after we did our retreat in September, we did not have a fourth meeting. And it's not a policy that binds us. It's just that we, in the last couple of years, had found that there are some topics that really need a deeper dive and our meetings have been going pretty late as it is. So, it probably would be more productive if some of those more involved conversations had their own little special thing, because there's just some things that we have to address every single Board meeting anyhow. So, that's sort of the thought behind. And like I said, it's not a policy that binds us by anything. It's just more the, our experience told us that, you know, there's some, like Caroline County meets twice a month, no matter what. So, it just, our experience told us that we need to break some of this up a little bit, so. And I was just going to say, tonight, if we can at least sort of nail down these dates, because we don't want conflicts. We don't want somebody to come and say, "Oh, my gosh, and I can't come to the retreat now because of this." So, this is an opportunity to put it in our calendars, share it with our families, so that we have to, because one of the requirements of being a Board member is to come to all the Board meetings. So, all right. I'm sorry, Mr. Queen.
For the parts of topics to be determined, how will those be determined? Is it something we will, as a Board?
Yeah, there are things that you, like, for example, we've been having sort of an email conversation with Ms. McKenzie, which involves a Board self-evaluation. Like, tonight, we might, we're just going to introduce what the thing is, but we're not really going to talk about it. That's the kind of thing that we can really just sort of roll our sleeves up and talk about. So, between now and when we get closer to November 17th, we, you know, now, we don't want to have an agenda that has 16 items on it, because that sort of defeats the purpose.
Follow-up question. Is this something, this could be to you, Trish, not really superintendent, to you. Is this something where like how Dr. McComas did the community conversations? Is this something as a Board we would want input on to discuss from the community, maybe, topics?
Well, if somebody came to you as a Board member and said, "This is something I'd like to see the Board," but we set our own agenda. It's not set by the public. And I don't mean, this is going to come across kind of a little harsh and I don't mean it that way, but school board meetings are for the business of the Board, really for us. So, and believe it or not, I don't think we, you know, I don't know if any school board does this, but, you know, we don't have to allow the public to say anything if we didn't want to, but we don't want to be rear ends about it. But, yeah. Technical term.
I'm going to quote that sometime. Like, yeah, I would recommend that the quarterly sessions be, you know, well, I think the budget's a perfect example, right? Like, where that's going to, we need to roll up our sleeves and really get into the weeds on, into the details of something. I think the Board self-evaluation could be a great example.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to rush that. You want to take your time.
Ms. McKenzie and I had exchanged emails and I was saying, thinking about where we are right now, you know, we're in July. You know, July's upon us now and Mr. Rhodes wasn't able to be here. Next month, you know, school starts in August. It's hard to believe we're like five or six weeks away from school. We're going to have a retreat in September. That's why I think either October or November would be an ideal time to have one. And between now and as we get closer to that, and as we start having, you know, there might be an issue that comes up in a regular Board meeting that we decide, "Hey, you know what? Here's something," I don't want to say table, "but it's something that we can still address and we can talk a little bit longer about it." So, start putting your thinking caps on now about some issues that we, as a Board, will decide what are the topics to be discussed in a quarterly meeting. Does that sound like a good plan and understandable to you?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
My question was for public consumption.
Okay, gotcha. I gotcha.
Yeah, you said start thinking now about the topics for what?
For what we might want to discuss at our quarterly meeting in November.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I've noticed that Dr. McComas put March of next year for a budget work section. Just for the record, this year, we did it in February, but you rolled out a couple more meetings in March. You had, well, it might have been April by the time that last one. You had a town hall, you know, I mean, well, we were facing, well, the budget, I can say for the 10 or 11 years I've been on the Board, this is the most in-depth presentation that we've ever had. And it was very, very helpful, but it occupied a lot of time, you know?
It did. And I will, I put this in March because, you know, the budget is so contingent on the legislative season.
Yeah, right.
And so that's why.
Well, it makes more sense.
In hindsight, I wouldn't, I don't plan on bringing anything in February to the extent that I did, just because I think it stretched it out, but we really couldn't wrap it up till we knew where the legislation was with the finances.
There were other considerations this year. I mean, we've been facing challenging budget years for a while now, but this was the most where we were really talking about the early retirement incentive and some positions that next year will go away. We've been able to, you know, hold on jobs. The other thing is, we had a very robust discussion about fund balance. And, you know, at some point, we're going to get a new procedure for that. I know, I'm just saying. But I'm just saying, those are things that, you know, never, they could have all been quarterly ideas. So, yes, I think it's actually smarter to wait until March to really talk about the budget, so.
And again, I put up here, these can always be adjusted at the will of the Board, as the Board so sees fit. This is just a proposal here, so I don't know if we want to.
Well, one of the things we need to also consider, I don't know what days of the week those are. The retreat is always been, the retreat has always been a Saturday.
The retreat is a Saturday.
Okay. Okay, but I.
November seventeenth, Monday.
Yeah, I don't want to interfere with your CAC meetings too, remember your, you know. So the CAC me-, so the, the quarterly meetings would be the, the, probably what, the fourth? The fourth Monday of a month?
Probably.
Yeah, so we need to make sure we're not.
The third.
Okay, not conflicting with your CAC meetings as well.
So that's the third, the third Monday? We good then? If it's November fifteenth, then we good, cause that's the seventh.
What day of the week is?
November seventeenth.
Well, and we had gone to the CAC's being on Thursdays.
Yeah, you changed your date and your location, that's fine, that's fine.
Confirmed the first two days, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
We good.
Okay, so do you, do we need a motion for this? Do we, I just feel like we need to really kind of nail down these dates now.
I think let's do a vote.
Okay, is there any discussion about how you feel about these dates? You're talking to Will's, I'm talking to you.
No, that's enough in advance where.
I'm sorry.
And again, as we move forward, if, you know, we get up to November, we need to adjust something, but at least now we can put something on the calendar.
That's fine.
Okay, so I need a motion, sorry, I'm just in a good mood tonight. I need a motion for these dates.
You said the CAC meeting occurs when?
They're on, it's on a Thursday.
I don't have the dates on my family, yes, on Thursdays.
Which was what, the fifteenth? Or what's the, when's the next CAC meeting? Is, okay, is there one in, uh, November? Yeah, cause I remember you weren't able to, to nail down all your dates, right? You got a couple.
Well, we got the first two days for sure, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Alrighty.
Cause March twenty-third would be a Monday, but if we're on Thursdays, it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, no, no conflict anymore.
Yeah.
So I'm, if, if you guys are comfortable. Alrighty, so if you guys are comfortable with this, I need a motion to sort of nail down these dates.
Real quick, uh, Gail, that's the first me, what's the second one? Cause we approved the first two.
We said October twenty-third was the approved October date. And then we proposed March nineteenth and May twenty-first. We, they were, they were left in proposal, so none of those dates conflict with these.
No, correct.
So Dr. McComas, I have a question for you. So, uh, because you kind of came up with these, these dates. This year, we had a, we had a retreat in April. Do you foresee us needing a retreat between March and June?
I don't necessarily. It was, we did that this year because there was the election process and we had new members coming on board. So we wanted to take time for the new board to form with new members. But I think that, that June fifteenth, you know, certainly is, could be moved to.
Well, and that'll be after the, the school year will have ended. One of the good things about twenty-twenty-six is every, the board is constituted right now, will be the board for the, the entire twenty-twenty-six. Whereas twenty-twenty, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year has been a period of transition where Mr. McQueen and Ms. McKenzie have only been on for six months. And some of the decisions that have affected them were made by a previous board. So next year, we'll all be together.
Continuity.
Okay. Any more questions before I get, get a motion? Alright, I'm looking for a motion to, to nail down these dates for quarterly meetings.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey's made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie's made it the second, is there any more discussion? Alrighty, I, I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thanks very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Dr. McComas, I think we still got you.
We do, okay, so I'm moving on to our, introducing our proposed strategic plan for the next four years. We're just gonna walk through the PowerPoint here quickly. There is a more developed thirty-nine-page plan that is attached on Board Docs for anyone who wants some recreational reading. And what I'm proposing to the board here, you'll have the month to review and consider, ask me a million questions, and then we'll come back in August to see if we want to adopt it. This plan, if you can, oh, you gave me the clicker. So really develop this plan based on spending the last year listening deeply and widely in our community and our school system, looking at our data and analyzing where we are and the work that we are doing every day in our classrooms. And really to put together a plan here that's about becoming a great public school system, right? And so we go back and I anchored this to Jim Collins, good, great research around what makes for great organizations. And they really talk about superior results. And that is when we talk about school systems, everyone wants excellent academic performance along with well-rounded experiences. And I know we have some community members here tonight to talk about adding to our well-rounded experiences. So superior results is really that academic performance that we all think of first and foremost with school systems. Distinctive impact, or great organizations bring a quality to their work that is different, right? So then the question is, what can we as Kent County Public Schools do different or better unlike any other public school system in this state or nation? Uh, and I have an idea around that. And then lastly, when you achieve superior results and provide distinctive impact in your community, um, and you do that reliably, year upon year upon year, you develop lasting endurance. So this plan is really to help us get moving in this direction of achieving superior results, distinctive impact, to build lasting endurance. I introduced this theory of action back in the beginning of our budget cycle, right? So if we provide unparalleled STEAM education to our students pre-K to twelve, and we have some extraordinary STEAM education pathways and experiences that our students have access to, if we do that in a way that's, that's different and unique from any other school system that lines up to our values here in Kent County around arts education and environmental science, you know, we're a very environmentally aware community with our agriculture and our, our water legacy here. So we have some unique values and assets here that we can tap into. We know that we've already made significant strategic changes in, in the way we teach literacy and mathematics over the last couple of years with Orton Gillingham as a methodology of teaching. We have shifted to evidence-based curriculums that when implemented with fidelity and integrity, yield higher outcomes for students. We are beginning to see that, uh, the impact of that. And we're gonna talk later this evening about our data, around our growth data. Our achievement data won't come in until, um, the end of August when the state releases it to us. We build upon that. And of course, in our high school years, for our students to have access to apprenticeships, the opportunity to, to acquire college credit while they're still in high school, so it's free to parents. The opportunity to get, uh, real-world experiences and industry-recognized credentials so that the day they walk across that stage, they not only have a diploma in their hand, they have a professional credential and a leg up to get started in this world. When we pull all of those things together, um, that really becomes our approach here. And so this superior performance is really anchored into that Orton Gillingham and mathematics, right? If we fully invest in innovative literacy practices, which we've done and we're seeing impact of. And this year, we're driving deep, more deeply into mathematics. Um, although this evening's data has some really promising impact of our math. We're gonna really focus on moving that data forward. And again, with our middle school, you know, the middle grades are so important and they're so challenging for our children and parents and teachers at that age. But really becoming, um, a very robust middle school where we have extensive interventions and enrichments, right? Middle school kids are also discovering who they are, what interests they have, what talents and gifts they have, right? We can't ignore that. Um, and we're offering some additional programming this year at the middle school, partnering with the Boys and Girls Club to offer free after-school youth development programming for all students at the middle school. We're offering, um, social, emotional health resources to parents through the Cook Center. Um, and so we're really investing in our middle school being a very strong, um, middle school. And, and things are turning around there. Our administration's done a, a great deal of work to turn the climate around. Uh, and we're focusing heavily on that academic piece around superior performance. Uh, distinctive impact, when I look across our school system this year and dug deeply, we have some really unique arts experiences here in Kent County that other school systems do not. We, as I mentioned earlier, our environmental education and access to the Sultana, our access to Echo Hill, really pulling those things together. And when I think about our distinctive impact, here's what I've come to really observe and, and respect and appreciate about Kent County Public Schools. We are not a big-box public school system. I have worked in big-box public school systems. We are a boutique public school system where we know every child by name. We know every child by need. We know every child by their gifts, talents, and aspirations. And so how do we provide that customized boutique attention to every child in a way that no school system in this state can compete with us? Um, and that is our distinctive impact, so we will be working diligently on that. Um, and this is really here lifting up all of the things that we, we provide for our students and really elevating that to make sure that people know what we have to offer. I cannot express how many times I find myself in conversations and people have misconceptions about what we offer or don't offer. Or they, um, they have a, a perception of our school system that may have been accurate at one point, but it's no longer accurate today. Um, and so I am seeking lots of opportunities to invite people into our school systems to come and see for themselves firsthand the good things that are in fact happening in our school systems and the achievement that is, uh, beginning to like really climb. And, um, to engage more volunteers. And I want to thank, we have a philanthropic supporter who's willing to help us, um, cover the cost of a part-time volunteer coordinator to help us make sure that our community is engaged and connected to our schools. So that kind of, in a, in a big, um, summary hits on the goals of our strategic plan. If you take time and look through the, the plan itself, you will see, uh, projected measurements of superior performance, of where we are today with incremental targets of increased performance year upon year. Now, will we be perfect in that? Probably not, but will we have a clear target? Are we clear in what we are doing to get there? Absolutely. Um, and I'll be bringing forward to the board, uh, reports throughout the year, um, as data becomes like when it's appropriate, right? So like when we finish our beginning of the year baseline data for, uh, math data, we'll bring that forward. When we get our state achievement data, we will bring that forward. Um, I'll also be bringing forward, uh, to the board, other measures of, um, school improvement as well related to CTE, industry-recognized credentials. So my goal is to, to be upfront and transparent with, this is our target, this is what we're doing, here's how we performed. So we can keep a pulse on things moving forward. So that concludes, um, just my proposing strategic plan for this month, so we can have more next, more.
Can I ask a question now or should we supposed to wait? So just a couple of things. It was really comprehensive, I thought.
Thank you.
And am I correct that a lot of what went into it was you sort of took all the information that came from the community conversations? Cause I recognized a lot of what was said.
Sure.
And I just want to make some general statements that a lot of what we'd like to have requires money, but there were a ton of things that we can do that won't require money. But I do have a question for you. As you, it stated at least twice there, that the biggest challenge and the biggest threat to us is longstanding decline in student enrollment. So my, my question to you is, does this strategic plan address that in a way that, are we gonna be able to at least, I don't want to say reverse, but at least change that? I mean, I know the, the stats from the Department of Planning say, what, three, three years from now, our birth rate or something's gonna start. So my question is, are, are we, does the new strategic plan, which is supposed to last five or six years, does it address that in a way that's gonna boost it? Or does it, or is it kind of a statement that's, cause I think the, the, the mission or the number one goal is to graduate students who are equipped to achieve their highest potential. So are we gonna do something to get the enrollment up? Or are we saying, okay, this is it, this is who we are, and all of our focus is going on these, this group?
Right, I think it's a fantastic question, and I would say it's not as dichotomous as that.
What's dichotomous mean?
Meaning, it, either we're gonna accept that we have a small enrollment and that's it, and that's, that's that. Or we're gonna grow enrollment. I don't think it's one or the other, it's not. What I would say is this plan is designed to, to reach towards superior results and distinctive impact. I think when I look at the data, and this is part of the misconceptions, and I had shared at the beginning, the budget cycle, and perhaps I should bring forward a presentation at some point around the data relate to declining enrollment. We follow, we, we know where the, when people leave us, where they're going, right? That's part of the information, um, that we are able to obtain. When I look at the patterns, and I personally have called people who left, uh, unenrolled their kids this year and said, you know, did you have a bad experience? Can you help me, you know, what's happening that you're leaving us? Every one of them now, I don't know if they're just being polite, every one of them said, no, I had a good experience. I'm, my job is taking me elsewhere, like they were moving out of the county. I have, I found housing in another place. I have a job that's in it, they're relocating for bigger life issues that are beyond the, the mission of the school system per se. It impacts us, right? I know I spoke with my mom, one mom, she found housing in Caroline County. And so that's where she could afford housing, and so she was relocating and, um, and it was a area that she could get to her job. And she took three students with her, right? So, um, I don't know that I have the capability to change housing costs. But what this plan does is it focuses on the things within our control, right? And I think our number one thing is performance, right? People want to know that their students are in a rigorous academically performing school system that they're happy and safe in, and that they have access to, uh, well-rounded experiences, whether that's athletics, band, theater, you know, maker space, right? So that's really where this plan focuses on the things within our control. And so I, I would offer, as we do better with that, hopefully it makes it more, uh, difficult for people to want to leave us, right? Um, I, I face a, there was a misconception that a lot of people were leaving us to go to private schools, but when I looked at the data, that's not true. Seven, seventy-one percent of people who are leaving us are enrolling in other public school systems. And a few like in another state, I think it's mostly Delaware. But, um, when I talk to people, it's, it's other issues that are taking them, it's not because they've had a bad experience. So I hope that somebody answers your question.
No, it's fine, yeah.
Um, and this is built on a multi-year.
It's a legitimate question, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cause you don't want that to be our excuse every time.
Correct, right, yeah.
Correct.
Well, and like Dr. McComas said, there are a lot of reasons why our enrollment's down.
Correct.
Part of it is just the nature of what's going on everywhere. People don't have six kids anymore. People, some people aren't having families at all, so.
I will say this to it, I, I skimmed. But we got time to review it, but what I've read, I do like how comprehensive it is.
Thank you.
For, uh, to digest, not just for board members, but for the community. But I, when I read certain things, I have to read it with two hats. I have to read it as a board and a, a member, and I have to read it as a parent. And as a parent, what would you say to someone's concern when, I feel like, which we should be knowing, we're addressing where we're weak. We're trying to get us to a, a place of high standards. But for someone like me with two daughters who achieve at a high level, I feel like the strategic plan doesn't speak directly to them or other students who have been achieving, who have been straight A and honor students, I feel like the stri-, now, keep in mind, I have skimmed, I haven't went.
Sure, sure.
There is some stuff, there is stuff in there about gifted and talented and some other stuff.
Yeah, I, um, and I think it's a great opportunity for me to highlight that. In the written-out plan, if you, uh, go to the sections that are listed with college and career readiness, what you're going to find is data related to dual enrollment.
Yes, my daughter is in.
Okay, so we have continued to expand, hold on, let me catch up to where I'm trying to send you to site plan.
Cause my concern is making sure there's balance while we're improving our school system to where we're not shifting the attention from one demographic of the students, whether it's, you know, for whatever reason, to another. We, I want to make sure it's just overall, uh, welcoming and conducive to all students.
Correct, well, and I will say, what I have seen in thirty years of public service in education is we do talk often about students with special needs and we tend to undertalk every, all four school systems I've been in. We tend not to talk enough about gifted and talented.
Yes.
Programming and services. So if you. So if you look in the strategic plan, let's see, did I open the right document?
You go onto a specific page.
Yeah, if you, yes, I will highlight. If you scroll down to, let's see, under Measurements and Evaluation Plan, you're going to see the things I was just calling out, the dual enrollment, and I believe I put the data in there in terms of how we have.
Well, I don't want to hold up, but I'll look under Measurements and Evaluations, is that what it was?
It is, and it's underneath, you're going to see literacy and math first, and you're going to see science and social studies, and then you're going to see the college and career readiness. Here we, yes, if you look at advanced placement, that's the first one that comes up. What you're going to see is we've had a 6% increase in the number of students who are not just taking advanced placements, but scoring three, four, and five, which is enough to get college credit. And you're going to see a target increase in that. You see the numbers of students that are taking advanced placement classes, the students are taking more advanced placement classes and scoring better on those college board exams. And the number of subjects that are there, you see two, 3D art design, biology, computer science, principles of computer science, literature, composition, psychology, environmental science, statistics. And so you see that there are rigorous college courses being offered that way, more students are taking them, and they're scoring better on them. If you scroll to the next section, that's where we get into the dual enrollment. We see the number of students who are earning college credit is increasing, and the number of those students who are scoring As and Bs in those college credits is also increasing. So we see more students taking advantage of rigorous pathways and performing better year upon year, right? So we're building our capacity to perform. So these are high school students taking college courses and getting college credit while in high school, all of which is free to parents. When we, I calculate up the class that just graduated, we save parents over, it was something like $380,000 of college coursework that we paid for that saved parents that much money. And then if you go into the apprenticeship and internship, you see that's still in its infancy, but we're growing that. Much of that deals with community businesses that are willing to take on a student. The difference between apprenticeship and internship is if it's paid, the apprenticeships have to go through a rigorous state requirement to become official apprenticeships. And then if you look at industry credentials, these are students who have, are choosing a career pathway and pursuing the professional credential in that pathway. So I would offer that for our students who are academically solid and they are ready to move, we have lots of pathways for them, and we're having more students achieve at higher rates. It's a matter of communicating that. And that's where this next year in the strategic plan, as we talked about the real constraints of a budget, we have to look at how do we add value and lift up the value we are offering already to the community, right? And again, the free resources in the Boys and Girls Club that we have partnered with the Cook Center and some other grant opportunities. So have fun doing your homework. I'll be here to answer questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okey-dokey. So we're going to move on to board discussion. Mr. Queen, we'll start with you.
Mr. Queen don't have much. I've been enjoying relaxing from my school year and doing a lot of traveling with the family to see my family frozen DC, the beach, and just a lot of quiet time, so I really don't have too much.
Okay. Ms. Dorsey, is there anything you'd like to add, say?
Uh, no, not with this.
Okay, Ms. McKenzie?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is that I just enjoyed the ESMEC conference in June. It was great, a great experience all around. I appreciated the extra time to have good conversations with both Dr. McComas and the other board members that got to attend. The speakers were inspiring and challenged us to different ways to evaluate how we, as board members, are staying focused on improving students' outcomes academically, emotionally, and in other ways. And so I just really very much appreciated that, you know, being able to be there.
All right, thank you. I've got a couple of things in there, sort of points of conversation or questions for Dr. McComas. So I was reading this story, just actually, I was reading it on Saturday, you know, the, what the challenges that Dorchester is having because Maryland's losing $360 million in federal money, and Dorchester's share of that is $642,000. So I know that we'd had a conversation, so I'm wondering what that means for, I mean, because I haven't seen it written about anybody else. I know earlier in the spring, when we were talking about our Title I and our Title IX funding, fortunately, we'd done a really good job of spending all but $7,000, so we really weren't out of it. So I don't know if this is a new level of cutting, or is this just somebody regurgitating news? Is this?
Yeah, so all the state, all the superintendents across the state were just in a meeting with Dr. Wright, the state superintendent, and her team Thursday afternoon. The federal government is reviewing, you know, every grant dollar that we get from the federal government, there's always a plan that you have to submit, like how are you going to use this money? And that plan has to be approved to go with the money. And so the federal government is reviewing all of those plans, and it's from their review process that we will know if things are cut or not. The first place that we are analyzing to be prepared to sort of have a contingency of how to operate if we need to, is any personnel that we have that are funded in these grants. We did already receive the commitment of the federal money for Title I dollars. What is being looked at right now is Title II, which is federal funds to help professional training for teachers and school administrators. And so that would be professional development.
Well, I noticed in your strategic plan, there were many, many, many mentions of professional development.
And some professional development costs money and some does not.
Okay, yeah.
You know, money's always helpful, but that doesn't mean that we just don't do things necessarily. So the Title II, the professional development grant from the federal government, Title III, that are resources to support students who English is not their family language, that is being looked at. Title IV, Title IV grants from the federal government are, I always call that the variety. It's kind of like the grab bag, you can fund technology, you can fund a lot of different things with Title IV funding. Our number one thing is to analyze what people are funded on our grants, because we do have some positions that are funded by these federal grants. And so that would be our biggest hit, would be if we had to lose people. And so we're actively analyzing that now. As of right now, we have not been reduced, but again, the federal government's in the process of that review.
Do we know when, would you?
I don't have a timeline on that. Dr. Wright did not mention that, but they, you know, they are keeping close watch on what the federal government is doing related to school funding, and so they are doing a good job of keeping the superintendents across the state informed. And again, we just had a meeting Thursday afternoon, I think it was like three in the afternoon.
Yeah, and Dorchester's board met that night, that's the only reason I know that. The other thing I just wanted to, it kind of got my attention, so the State Department of Education just released its figures for homelessness from, do you know that Kent County percentage-wise is the third highest homelessness in the state? You know, not surprisingly Baltimore City, then Talbot, and then Kent County. So, yeah, which was kind of jarring to me. Now, obviously, the actual number is small, which you would expect because we're the smallest county. And over the last six years, we had a big dip, and then we've kind of come back up. And again, it's a case of, you know, greater number of homeless, and part of that is, as we all know, affordable housing is a huge problem here, and they've done a better job of identifying homelessness, and homelessness per the federal statute is not necessarily someone who is camping out in a tent. It's somebody that might be living in a shelter, might be in a car, might be doubling up with other family members. But it's, so at the same time where our homelessness numbers are rising, federal funding is decreasing. So again, it's just, it kind of got my attention, so.
Yeah, well, it reflects just as we, you know, as we work through the budget process, we know now every single school qualifies for concentration of poverty.
Right, yeah.
Right? Every single school qualifies for the community eligibility program, which provides free breakfast and lunch to every single student in Kent County Public Schools every single day and through the summer, right? So it's just one more piece of evidence, if you will, of the state of poverty that our students are experiencing.
And even with that, I know it's a lot of not being reported on what's homelessness, so I.
Yeah, well, I'm sure it's underreported, it's underreported, but it's a better job. For anybody who's listening that's curious, so Baltimore City, 7.5%, Talbot, 7.1%, and we're almost 6%. And the rest, the next couple are all Eastern Shore, Somerset's after us, and of course, Western Maryland, some of those counties are like 2% or 3%. But anyhow, like I said, it's, and it's reinforced by the fact that we've got such a high poverty rate in our students, which, you know, there's like two Kent Counties. You know, the Kent County that can't get some help from the state to build a middle school because we got a lot of rich people, and then there's the people that go to our school system who are on the other side of that.
Who are constantly ignored.
Working hard every day.
Yeah. Let me ask this question then, since we're talking about poverty, and we're talking about the strategic plan. Keep in mind, Queen skimmed, but with that, how much attention have you as a superintendent paid to us being in deep poverty? Because the percentage, if I'm not mistaken, was like close to 80% of students in poverty. You can speak to it if you want. In your strategic plan, how do you address that? And when I say you, I don't mean I'm putting the burden on our school.
No, no, and I don't take it that way. I chose to be the face of the school system, so I take it.
Because that is an issue, like for me, I know I help families, not just put them out there, but in the driftwood, there's families there, and I know families that are living with other family members where it might be a combination of three families in a two-bedroom where there's six to eight people, and I can tell you, these families are, those families are not concerned about coming to school. I just know that for a fact, so.
Well, they're trying to survive.
Correct.
So, and anyone who's struggled with poverty knows that you can, you know, it's very stressful, and you're just trying to keep a roof over your head and food in the belly. Here's what I will answer your question with it. We look at that, and I do pay close attention to this in two ways. First and foremost, the human side of poverty, right? I grew up very poor in Baltimore City myself, watched my mother struggle to put food in the table and things of that nature. So it is a personal experience for me. And so the first and foremost is how do we address that, the humanity, right? Because poverty is dehumanizing first and foremost, is, and that's why I'm truly grateful for our community schools programs, right? The fact that our schools do, are able to receive, and while the federal government is reducing its support, the state government is not reducing its support. And for as much as we may go back and forth around Blueprint, those concentration of poverty funds are a function of Blueprint, and they're providing resources for families at every school. And of course, we're excited, our last two schools are just standing that up. So that's really first and foremost, where families can, we have that human contact to help them with food pantry items, to help them with clothing items, to help them get connected to healthcare services, right? That they otherwise would go without. We do have services to support families that are experiencing homelessness, to try to get them connected with resources and emergency housing, right? That there's not a lot available here, but we tap into the resources to try to get them connected. So when we, once we address the human piece of that, I do monitor the data. You will see later this evening, we're looking at our measures of academic performance and literacy and mathematics, and you will see where I look at how are our students who are economically disadvantaged performing? Are we helping them overcome the challenges by at least building up their academic performance so they have a fighting shot to climb up out of poverty, right? Because no one chooses to be in poverty. Your circumstances are challenging, and sometimes we can't measure up to the challenge we're facing, right? So I think there's twofold to that, and I always monitor our student, our students from different angles. You know, I look at the data from different lenses, because sometimes you see patterns that you otherwise would not see. And economically disadvantaged families is one that we watch.
The question I have, no, just because, you know, I understand the idea of not choosing poverty, however, there are individuals that do struggle with mental health and addictions, and there are opportunities sometimes for adults to come out of addictions, and then they make the choice not to.
Yeah, yeah.
So there are some times when that happens, when poverty is a choice.
Correct.
And so when I think about how schools can better partner with like local services, when we think about how addictions are affecting our school, how mental health issues are affecting school, and I understand that through, like, I know you're trying, you know, the new thing, I forget the name, you just mentioned it, the service that's available.
Community, Top Tank for the Health Department, community schools?
Right, you're trying to build services, there's the new online services through our.
Oh, Cook Center for Human.
So there's the Cook Center, and I know we have other partnerships, but I can't express how much addictions and mental health does affect our students, because there's family dysfunction regardless of economic status sometimes. And so, and that also affects our students. And so these things are not disconnected, I guess, is my point.
Oh, I agree.
You know, and, you know, as we consider how to support and how to eat, I know that our schools are trying to always find ways, and I just wanted to put that out there, that addictions and mental health is very much connected to poverty.
No, 100%.
Right, I completely agree.
Because there's so many pillars with poverty. I didn't mean to cut you off, mental health, physical health, career, education, networking, family, it's so much that goes with that, that, well, your answer was a good answer, in my opinion. I like that, and I've told you this privately, your vision when it comes to looking at the overall picture of the well-being of students and community, and I think you just spoke to it, hopefully it's kind of articulated like that within your plan, because I think that is needed here in this county.
Ms., I think Ms. Dorsey wanted to say something.
No, I just wanted to, even the percentage that, the percentage that they put down, which is like 6%, I know it's probably at least nine to 12, I would say.
Well, it's under, I mean, everything like that is underreported, yeah.
Because it's a lot of.
Well, it's, there's a stigma, it's, people don't like to share that kind of personal information.
And I don't know what type of trouble will come behind it.
Exactly.
They don't really trust that it's helped more than it's going to be.
So at the very least, it's almost 6% is what I'm saying. It just kind of really pulled me up.
And I also wanted to say one more thing. When we were talking earlier, when we were doing the budget, and we were trying to, you were doing your presentation, and they were trying to figure out what you could do to get students to stay here and parents and families to move here. And you can ask the school, and, you know, we may have ideas, but really, the county itself has to work as a whole together, you know, because there's different leaders that's leading different positions in this county that have to address the different situations that's actually making it hard for families to be here. You know, income is what it is, and then, you know, everybody's not eligible for low-income apartments or public housing, even if they were available. You know, they could be right over the line of what it takes to be there versus, you know, going to the ones that charge the regular price.
Right.
And like I said, when you are a single parent and you have children, and say you have two different sex children, you have to have a three-bedroom, that's a requirement. And the lease amount you must make a month would be 50 to 50, I noticed by heart. And that's something that has to be accounted for as far as your pay stuff. And if you don't make that, then you can't have an apartment there. I think that's discrimination, but it's underhanded. It's like, you know.
It is.
It's a requirement that has been put in, but in a sense, you know who is not going to meet those requirements.
Redline and gentification.
And the next one up from that one for that type of apartment was 58-50. You tell me who's making that money here, you know, unless you're someone.
They are, let me hold some.
You know, and especially if it's a one-parent household, it could be two-parents. And this has to be probably their net, not their gross. So if you, the people that's going to attend our schools have children, if we're not going to make it affordable for them to live here, how, we can't then turn around and blame the school for people moving. Just like you said, the one woman, she was saying that, you know, the housing was more affordable, you know, in Krieger Lake County. So these things are true, you know, sometimes we don't get to ask them those questions. But what I'm saying, if we really want to improve Kent County and the things that we feel like, hey, if, you know, the economy has to be better, you know, it has to be able to support, the county can support the school, revenue has to come up. You know, it has to be able to support um the county to support the school, revenue has to come up. And we have to, um those things lie in different departments, other than the school, school doesn't have control over that. They're just the ones that's getting affected, that's being affected by it. And then um when Laura was talking about mental illness. Um we closed down centers and places that can help people.
And I I will.
We expect to get better if we take the foundational pieces out.
Right.
And I I will say this to our Board of Education. Uh public school system superintendent and board members. As long as I've been here, I think during our budget session that just passed. We did a real good job of painting painting that economy of the overall picture. Because it hasn't really been talked about in depth like we actually had to do in our county in a long, long time, so. I would say, not to pat us on the back, but kudos to just bring that awareness to let people know these conversations can happen. On a platform like this or on a platform where there are other elected officials. Because a lot of times when you hear poverty, poverty is not just being homeless. Living check to check is poverty, a lot of people. Uh kind of are confused what poverty is because you don't know you're in it until you realize, oh, I'm poor. So I think a lot of people um paid attention to us discussing it. And a lot of people, from what I was told, was grateful that the eye was even on talking about. The well rounded subject of it's not just on the school board, has a team effort from all individuals, not just county commissioners. But also at the state level and businesses and private institutes, so um. I would say for us, these type of conversations help us guide our community towards what we're ultimately wanting.
So when I was reading your strategic plan, I I made a note to myself because I. I didn't realize when I wrote it down, I thought it was talk, the note was cohesive countywide collaboration. Then when I read it a little further, you were talking about our school system, but when I first started, I was thinking, yeah, it's about time we get, we get everybody on the same page, yeah.
Well, you know, schools don't exist in isolation, they exist within a community. And they naturally reflect all the beauty and challenges of the community that they exist in, right? So in order for us to move our schools forward, it is a whole community effort, right? And uh and it's not one way, it's got to be mutual and ongoing, so.
And one last thing.
I believe we can do it, people.
One last thing to quickly speak to Laura Coyne. It is a choice, to a degree, about staying in poverty, so like tomorrow. We're going to be meeting, an open meeting with our county commissioners, talking about something that can help everyone. And we won't see a large turnout from the public community, there has been multiple opportunities. To not just talk about education, but just express the impact of things here economically. And education wise, and the people aren't showing up. So it has to be a onus on people in poverty, not just poverty, people who have, people who don't have, to actually step up as well. Because the burden gets placed. Issue, we were reran and we were elected on elected officials, but the onus has also has to be on the community that we're fighting for. And a lot of times we don't see that until it's time to make major decisions that impact these people, so.
Anything else on this, guys? Already, moving forward to the BOE self assessment, is that something you'll talk about?
I can invite Ms. McKenzie to introduce that.
Sure, um so self about, for board self evaluation, it's something that I've seen before, just looking. You know, about best practices for for board boards of education, and so it is a best practice for determining the efficacy, productivity and optimization of a school board. Um the self evaluation process ensures success. And it helps us to build trust with outside stakeholders, including parents and teachers. When we share um the pro, the the self assessment process and insights we gain from regular evaluation. So it's not just for our knowledge, we need to be communicating it to the community that that we're doing this. Um so the benefits of self assessments include promoting accountability. Reflection on individual and unified performance. The identification of board strengths, weaknesses and opportunities for improvement. Dedicated time for open communications about board efficiency. Analysis of performance against established goals and focused future goal goal setting. Uh and a safe time and space to resolve obstacles impeding progress. And so the two examples that I included on the agenda are just. And I, you know, an idea starting place, the goal will be. I'm hoping to develop a self evaluation process, I've I've found some other self evaluations that that are. I'm hoping that when we have the opportunity to talk at length about it, to for everybody to look at. I'm not picturing this being something that's solved overnight, right? I'm picturing it being something that we continue to discuss till we find. Uh some a process that is both manageable and sustainable, so that whoever is sitting at this table, it will be self evaluation moving forward. And so we really, you know, all of us have different. Things that we're doing in our lives professionally and personally, and so it needs to be a process that's truly manageable for the for the typical board member who's going to be sitting here. And so I don't anticipate that it's going to be like a quick thing, but we got to start somewhere. And so I I just think it's something that, because and and there's. Very few, if hardly, I I don't know really any counties that are doing it, it's it's being encouraged more, especially with Mabe and things like that, but at. At that level, but it's not something that's often practiced, and so I I want us, again, as Dr. McComas is um elevating. Um we need to elevate as well. And um and so that's where um, you know, I want. Uh this board to function at its best capacity and 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 show this that we are committed. Just as um uh the rest of the schools are, you know, the school system itself is committed to improvement. And um so I feel like we really need to lead the way in that and and show that we are um engaged and committed to to doing the same. And so that's where I just, you know, wanted to show you, introduce it, and then look forward to the opportunity to discuss about it.
I agree with this a hundred percent, and I was shocked that it wasn't normal practice for boards, uh so. I'm not saying it holds us accountable, but it gives us a good idea of where we are as board members. My only question would be, and maybe you know this answer. Are we reporting this out to the community, are we sharing the answers with each other?
Yeah, it it would be something that when when we look at, you know, at the evaluation, get the results, and then we would need to determine, okay, what do we do with these results? How do we adjust our practices at this level? And then communicate that to the community and and how, what that looks like, and so yes, the goal is always to communicate. How we're making improvements.
Well, I did the John Queen skim on the on, because it just got added today. And I was happy to see, again, quick look at it, we're doing so many of those things anyhow.
Correct, yeah, there is a lot, but it's nice to have something a little more formalized. And that way, whoever knew that comes and sits at this table, they don't feel lost, it's like, nope, we got a process here, start taking a look at this, start, you know, get you wrap your head around what we do. And it it can be a nice way to orient someone to this to this position.
And for me, that's that's one of the things I actually liked about when you said, hey, Queen, I'm just thinking about this, keep in mind when we discuss it. If I came, when I came into this board ad seat, I don't feel like I had a lot of guiding structure. Pamphlets to just say, oh, this is what expected of me, here's what was before me, here's what I am. It was almost like my first three to four months I was learning on the fly. And then going through that budget we just went through, so it was a lot at one time. With this, it almost gives us like a moment to reflect on ourselves. And then as a board going forward, because to your point and Dr. McComas' point, since she's been superintendent. We need to start putting procedures and policies in place to hold us all accountable as we govern our public school system. So for me, something like this should automatically be on the agenda for the November uh retreat. Because I think it's a no brainer.
Quarterly meeting.
Quarterly meeting, yes, where we can discuss this. Um because I think this opens up a lot of conversation. Something like this can um kind of paired with um the one we had with the lady from Mabe, I forget her name. Those type of conversations with this, I think it will give us in leadership positions. Sort of foresight on where we want to be, and then with these type of self assessments, I think it would be easier. For the board to set goals, like, of course, we have our superintendent who we look for. Her to set goals for our school system, but we don't really have those type of goal outlines as a board, and I think introducing something like this. Now and even four years from now, when the next bunch come in, the next bunch come in. Two years from now and. Where we're, where we're also using this as a conversation to set goals for ourselves, I think it was uh. No brainer for me.
Alright, so I think we're agreed, that'll be priority for November, thanks, Ms. McKenzie.
Yes, thank you, good job.
So moving on to the Clay Target Team.
Excellent news, Mr. Queen, President McGee, uh school board members, Dr. McComas, I stand before you tonight. Uh to bring forth uh a presentation for information. About the potential to bring a Clay Target Club Team to Kent County High School with an anticipated start date. Of two thousand and uh September of two thousand and twenty five. Uh just to give you a brief overview of how this has started, um over the last couple of years, there has been. Strong community input and advocacy to bring a Clay Target Team here to Kent County High School. Um a couple of years ago, Kent Island High School. Was the first um Eastern Shore school system to start a Clay Team. And then it grew um as a combined team with Queen Anne's County High School, that then grew into two separate teams. With then uh Easton High School in Talbot County starting their own team last year. Um earlier this. Summer in June, um Dr. McComas. Principal Hempstead and myself held a stakeholder engagement night where um it was standing room only essentially in the. High School Media Center with well over sixty uh prospective student athletes, their families, as well as other um community. Members who have shown significant interest in supporting this program. Tonight, we just want to inform you, um advocate, support the um great and significant community interest that has been brought forward. And just in uh open up in a conversation uh about what this could look like going forward. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our Kent County High School principal. Uh Chris Hempstead to lead you through um a presentation, and her and I will just jump in back and forth, just sharing other details.
No, I I it's right here, I I wanted to confirm, did you say twenty five or twenty six, but it's right here, twenty five.
So this is for information tonight, but the expectation is we'll be asked to vote. Right in August?
Yes, okay. The plan is um after tonight, if there's interest from all of you to bring this forward for your vote and approval, get this uh started. For a um smaller fall season with the big spring season to start in spring of twenty twenty six.
Typically, when is this season?
Yeah, we'll talk about, we'll talk about that, let me, let me go through the presentation and then um we'll open it up for some questions and um thoughts. So putting then Dr. McComas, President McGee, members of the board and our K C P S community, happy summer.
While they're pulling that up, I just want to welcome you back from the uh Principal of the Year event that you were just at representing Maryland, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I'm on, we're on no sleeves at this point. Left at ten twenty last night and pulled into BWI at six thirty this morning. Three hours um Seattle time, so um bear with me. Okay, at Kent County High School, we talk a lot about building, that's what we are and that's what we do, building where we are. Building students up, building connections and building programs that give every student a chance to belong. We don't build just for tradition, uh we build for the next right thing. So tonight, we want to talk about that next right thing being a proposal to launch a Clay Target Team at K C H S. And this is not something that has just come about. The four years that I have been at Kent County High School, I've had multiple students and families. Come to me and inquire and ask about, you know, why isn't this something that we do? Okay, so this proposal is more about, is more, it's about more than just adding a sport, it's about creating access, opportunity and community. We held an intro, Dan said that we, or Mr. Hushen said that we held an interest meeting on June third with over fifty participants, and it was, it was. You know, I'm being, it was a lot more than that, students. So our students were there, our families were there, our staff was there, even representatives from local ranges. Uh we also met with the Queen Anne's County High School Coach to learn how their successful program runs. And at this time, we have thirteen and more K C H S students who have already expressed interest in joining.
And I'll just chime in there too, um in addition to the thirteen who showed interest at that stakeholder engagement meeting. We have an additional um eight students who will be rising ninth graders who have also expressed interest, so. We're already over twenty students who have expressed interest.
Yep, the excitement is real and so is the momentum at this point. Um this team brings unique benefits to our students, it invites students who may not be interested in traditional sports. It reinforces discipline, responsibility, respect for rules or values that extend well beyond school. We live in Kent County, a place where outdoor sports are part of the fabric of who we are. And yet some of our students who love that way of life have nowhere in the school system to plug in. I want to address the um, or this team team brings, okay, I want to address the number one concern upfront, safety. Clay target shooting is one of the safest high school sports in the country. With over forty five thousand participants annually, the USA Clay Target League has reported zero firearm incidents since two thousand and one. This is less than football injuries, basketball injuries, any other contact sport that high schools have. Locally, we will require B N R or N R A certified safety training before participation. Practices and competitions will be fully supervised by certified adults and safety gear is required at all times.
Just to add a another data point, what I just shared with you. Um was a study that um has been provided by the Clay Target League, which is the national governing body for high. And as you can see on this chart, when we say that it is the safest sport out there, this is the data. That they are going off of that was done in the twenty two, twenty three school year. Obviously, you can see that football, which is a very, very popular sport. Um all across the country, you know, the amount of injury risk, you know, is well over five hundred thousand. Per year, when you look at Clay Target athletes, zero.
That that's shocking.
That was shocking.
Shocking.
In full transparency, you know, one of, when this was first brought forward to me, that's the first thing I thought, wow.
Right.
High school kids, you know, having access to guns, but, you know, it it's not about that. And and we'll go into some of the reasons why it is such a six, four year short.
We don't put our kids in bubbles when we have things, then we provide a structured place that they can understand how to responsibility. Or how to responsibly use our tools that we provide. You think about household items, your your knives and, you know, tools, those are all things that could hurt. You know, and become a safety risk. The moment that you start um giving them the responsibility and teaching them how to use those tools. That becomes, you're putting them in a very safe environment, so again, this is not a contact sport, it is a team sport. Okay, but you're also teaching them the appropriate ways to use the tools that they are using.
And data backs that up, which is.
It does.
Because the first, when y'all were reading, what jumped out was the discipline, promote safety, focus and respect, and. You went right to data right away to kind of, okay, that's not a concern of mine anymore, go ahead, I'm listening.
And uh just to emphasize there too, you know, with the. Culture um of our area. You know, what actually makes us different from our counterparts in like Queen Anne's County. That will ultimately see us be very successful. Is that we have a feeder system here with the four H triple shots. Which, you know, there is over forty um students who participate in that. Now, when you talk about uh triple shots, you know, you're also talking about um archery, but you're also talking about shotgun, when you look at shotgun. There's over thirty student athletes, so. These individual kids who have shown interest, you know, have been brought up, you know. Brownness, they're surrounded by family members and and, you know, peers and um, you know. Mentors who, you know, have promoted this for a long time in their life. And um we wouldn't be standing up in front of you tonight if it wasn't for all of those people that have been so. that have been so supportive. And we have some people in attendance tonight. I will like to highlight Alan Spray, who's kind of been the voice of the community group here and has worked very closely with Principal Hempstead.
Yeah, so our proposed structure that you see on the screen right now is simple and sustainable. So whenever we bring something, you know, or when a teacher or a student or a staff member comes to me and asks, you know, hey, I'd like to do this, and, you know, one of the questions that we ask is, you know, is it sustainable? We talked about the feeder program. We talked about the interest that is not only coming from our students and our families, but also the community, community members that don't even have children in our school system right now are very invested in this process. So it is sustainable. We would offer both fall and spring seasons, Mr. Queen, students in grades nine through twelve who meet athletic eligibility because it would come over that under our sports athletic eligibility. And they would practice typically one to two times per week in an approved local range. Competitions would follow a weekly league schedule with potential for state and national participation. And we would have a volunteer head coach and certified assistants multiple so that we would have a supervision ratio of two adults for every five student athletes.
And just to elaborate on that, the clay target standard for the student athlete ratio is ten to one. The five to two, we are actually going off of the model that Queen Anne's County High School uses. Who Coach Powell, I do have to give him a shout out. He's been very supportive of this process, has been with us every step of the way. I actually just spoke to him tonight before we jumped into open session. Queen Anne's County High School just came back from the national championships. And just to show you what this could do for some of our student athletes on top of the scholarships that are available to them. Queen Anne's County has a national champion that was just crowned this past weekend.
And I'm correct that this is coed, right, Boizan? Because there were girls at the interest meeting, so, yeah.
Yeah, so it follows, we'll talk about Title IX.
Just real quickly, just to talk a little bit more about the interest with the state volunteers and coaches so far. We have seven who have either submitted a volunteer coach application or have at least given a verbal commitment. And there are quite a few more who I will track down this week at the Kent County Fair. So we are not, you know, shy of any support for this to meet that five, the two student athlete ratio.
So we've mapped out a realistic cost structure. It could be plus or minus, but you would have league registration, safety gear, ammunition will cost roughly around four hundred and thirty-five dollars per student. That could be in the fall and then into the spring. Range fees and transportation will vary based on partnerships and logistics. But we are committed to keeping this affordable through fundraising, local sponsorship, and then looking into any grants. But we've had a lot of local community partners and sponsorships that are asking questions and are interested in investing in this opportunity for our students.
At this time, there is no plan to have this be a budgetary impact for Kent County public schools. And we've had very strong commitments from people like Mr. Spray who have no doubts that this will be the funding board will not be an issue.
Absolutely, Miss, forget it.
Queen Anne's County, they shoot fall and spring. They average about two thousand dollars a student. The past five years, not one student has made the home.
Did I understand from the interest meeting last month that Queen Anne's does not provide transportation, that the students are responsible for getting themselves to the range and stuff, right?
Yes, and, you know, just to hit on that point a little bit more, the model that is used with Queen Anne's is that the practices are usually, you know, offered in the evening or on a Saturday, which would also allow, you know, other athletes who have an interest to also partake in this.
So the, the, the safety issue, which is really amazing. I'm just thinking also, the nighttime or the Saturdays would make me feel better. Just nervous about a kid bringing their gun to school.
Of course.
So I'm looking at Ms. Hempstead, so.
Absolutely. We would follow all, you know, all of our school rules and under, you know, our code of conduct, that it would be very clear to the students that, you know, no guns would be allowed on campus. We spoke to Mr. Powell about that also. They've also, you know, trained their students that, you know, you have to be in school and then you leave school when you go home and you pick up, you know, your guns and then you go to practice.
And I think they said at that meeting that they, they can't have a gun and drive, right? So that's really it's their parent.
Firearm.
Right. Yeah, they, they mentioned that at the meeting last month.
Yeah.
It's a great point. Thank you.
So this team would be fully compliant with Title IX. The USA Clay Target League is a coed sport, open to all students regardless of gender. We will ensure equal access to coaching, equipment, facilities, and competition. This is an opportunity to model equity in a unique and empowering way for our students. So to move, oh, sorry.
How many students are you able to take?
So, so it's been recommended to us and we've worked very, very, very close with our colleagues over in Queen Anne's County Schools who have very much encouraged us, you have to start small. And in conversations with Coach Powell, they try to cap it off at twenty students.
So
you know, if, if we had gotten to that point where, you know, we truly have over twenty students interested, well, then we'll have to talk about a process of, you know, who's going to give the preference, which, you know, there's already internal conversations about how that could work.
So, so just as a point of reference, I mean, I'm encouraged by the big turnout because twenty is more than we have on the football team. Twenty's more than we have on the baseball team. Twenty's more than we have on the soccer and lacrosse teams, more than we have on the field hockey team. So it's kind of interesting that this is the one that's got the big interest.
Yeah. Because I, I didn't, I haven't heard much about it. And so Dr. McComas, you put on our, our plate the kind of research. And I'll be honest, at first I was like, to your point, you got enough full performance force, why are we looking to add another one? So I started reaching out to people because I'm expecting to hear it's an elite sport, you're not going to be able to afford it. And I called over Kent Island Q A, well, Q A mainly. And what I heard was, y'all always late to the party, Queen. This is what everyone's into. And I was like, seriously? And then I start doing my little due diligence just to understand this presentation. And because y'all had told us about the standing room only, I was shocked about the opportunity that we possibly didn't know about until now. And I assume these gentlemen in the crowd are the people who brought it to us.
They are, they are, they are a few of the many. But as I've said, Mr. Spray has definitely taken on that role of, you know, advocating on behalf of the group.
What would you say to people in the community that think it is an elite sport? Or forgive me for saying this, it's only for the white kids. How would we as a school system kind of promote it, market it, and say, oh, no, that's, that's, that's not true. This is what we're doing here.
Mission and vision of the overall Clay Target League, that it is an inclusive
Yes, I saw that too, yes.
It's an opportunity. And I will tell you, one of the coaches who has expressed
Jim Buck.
Who is a very well-known figure
Yes.
Is an African-American male who would also, so we would have already a diverse coaching staff.
For public consumption.
Two other points. So first of all, to Mr. Spray's point about cost, that would not be a hurdle.
Because we're not paying for it.
Exactly. But I'm just saying for a kid from a low-income family or may, maybe racially
Yes, yes.
That, it would not be cost prohibitive for any kid. Second of all, so we have a kid that just graduated, twenty twenty-five. David Daniels is going to shoot on Washington College team. Bryce Moore is already there. I interviewed David and I was, and I, and I said, you know, did you ever think you were going to be a college athlete? And he said, you know, I never thought about that until the Washington College coach saw him at let's Sudlersville or one of the other shoots and has been following him. And they've been in conversation for two years. And that's really what got David to go to college was the fact that he could be a college athlete. He's still going to work at the farm. He's going to live at home, but he's going to have an opportunity to get a college education and compete in a, in an N C A sport.
At that point, what, what was new information for me is the amount of scholarship
That's another thing that was out there.
There.
Yes.
From various foundations. If I can mean, when Coach Powell came to the stakeholder engagement night, I think he shared that re-graduating athletes all receive, you know, significant scholarship funds, you know, to go off and do this collegiately.
Yeah.
And most of the time, you know, to be successful, and we really, we've had a lot of conversation. And I think Dr. McComas, she brought that up today when you were talking about steam and that art portion of it, that, you know, we can bring what our strengths are and what we want to see. But if it doesn't support what the community and the resources in the community have, then you're not going to be successful. So it's our job to really look at what in Kent County are, you know, it, are, you know, what's being provided? You know, what's there? What's the interest? And this certainly is, you know, an interest in Kent County and has been for many, many, many years. And we, it's our responsibility to look at that and, and be able to provide that for our students.
I mean, I wouldn't be overly dramatic to say we've, we've been not a disservice, but here's a whole big segment of our county that we haven't been able, that we have not been meeting their interests.
Agreed.
And it might not cost us anything, so.
Which is great. And then like, it's also, you all said through the presentation, all genders and no contact. I know a lot of people shy away from sports for the mere physical contact of sports. And this gives a lot of kids, which you already are seeing from the large turnout and interest, another sport where they can say, I think I can do that. That adds value to our school system and to our athletic programs, I think. Question, what, you want to finish?
No, it's okay.
You were saying about, when you said transportation not being provided and you brought up partnerships. When you say partnerships, what are we thinking? Like, I don't know the proper term, but the, the gun range folks, transport kids, boys?
No, we're not talking about partnerships for the transportation. That, that responsibility would be on
Families.
Families.
Understood.
Especially with the point that was raised about, you know, being in possession of a firearm under the, the, the community partnership aspects comes into the
Fundraising, sponsoring, yes, understood.
Facilities that we could use because one of the things we have not got into is the different disciplines. So when, when you talk about the sport as a whole, there's different disciplines that these athletes can shoot, which again, was something that I hadn't been able to learn. You know, so part of what we're bringing to you tonight is that we would like for the athletes to be able to participate in two disciplines, which would include both skeet and trap, which then leads to two partnerships in the community because the two ranges that are willing to serve as host sites, one, you can only shoot trap and one, you can only shoot skeet.
Could you explain what trap and skeet means?
I'm going to turn it.
Does it have something to do with the direction or where the, the target comes out of?
Well, real quick before you explain, so people at home can hear, can you, can whoever going to explain come up to the mic, please?
Hey, full disclosure, this is Principal Hempstead's husband.
Come on, come on.
When you shoot trap, and it's, it's just the language, trap and skeet and sporting clay is basically three different ways to shoot these clay targets. Trap, you stand behind the house in a semicircle. There's a house sits down in the ground. You can see this right up here, Kent County Gun Club. The house is down in
One, two, thirteen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that trap down inside rotates. So as you're standing there and you yell pull, that thing can be anywhere from a range of like this. You have to follow the target and pull it.
Okay.
And skeet, there's many trap houses. They're high, they're low. Most everything comes right to left, left to right. So that's just basically, that's the only difference. It's very safe because everything's being shot out in front of you.
Yeah.
Nothing over top, nothing behind you. Everything's out in this range out here. And you have scores and you have guys standing right behind you, letting you know if that was a hit or a miss. And if, when you, the greatest thing about trap and skeet is you put one shell in your gun, usually unless you're shooting doubles. So when you pull that trigger
It's over.
It's over. Your gun's unloaded. You're only allowed to do that. If you, now if you're shooting doubles, you put two in there and your instructor behind you will let you know that when you shoot one, if it's a miss or a hit, and then you reach around for that one. But there's only two shells in your gun at that point. So once you shoot those two, you know, your gun's empty. And you break it down, you open it up and, and that's it. I've been doing this for a long time. I appreciate all these people for coming out here. And this is something that I asked Chris to look at four or five years ago myself and my girls. I would have loved for my girls had this opportunity. My girls would have been on this team.
Yeah.
Our administration at that, that point was just not interested in entertaining us at all. Thank you, Dr. McComas, for letting us allow us to bring this.
You know, there, there are two Kent, well, David Daniels is one of them. He was the alternate. But you know, there are two Kent County High School kids, Joey Homiak's the other one. They're on the state four H
Yeah.
Shooting team. So I mean, they're having success other places. We certainly deserve to get them success in their own high school.
Agreed.
You know, I, again, I talk to my wife about this all the time about, I go up to every football game, you know, cursey. And, you know, you're getting kids, you got a fire truck there waiting for a kid to get hurt. This is a sport where if it's done properly, and I know that both trap houses, I'm very, I've shot up here in Kent County, and I know the one down in Massey, these guys are professionals. They've been doing this for a long, long time. And they would, they would never allow something to, you know, to go wrong. It, it would, it would be done right, guys. I really, thanks for the opportunity. I just, I didn't mean to come up here and take it.
Thank you, thank you for the explanation.
You might have just sealed the deal. Okay, so to move forward.
No, I'll let her, I'll let her go. That way I can run them all at the end.
We would continue gathering feedback as needed from parents and community partners. We would certainly look at confirming at home range and begin some of those formal agreements with our partners. We would ensure coach certification, background checks, and insurance compliance. And then we would just begin active sponsorship and fundraising outreach. So we're ready to get to work. We just need your green light.
Let's just talk about the insurance aspect because I'm, I'm sure that is something that's, you know, a major priority for the school board and something that in full transparency, you need to be aware of, okay? So when we talk about the term the Clay Target USA League, that is the governing body. The reason why this is going to be considered a club sport is because it has no affiliation with the Bayside Conference or the State Athletic Association.
But there is a league.
There is, yes. There, there is a league and as, as like Mr. Hempstead was saying, when they are shooting, there's a digitized scoring system. So you'll, you'll shoot at your home range and then the scores get inputted electronically. There, there are some tournaments and stuff where I believe athletes can travel. But for the most of, of the scheduled events, it's just one team. And you're, you know, you're with your coaching staff at, at that range. But regarding the insurance, the league itself ensures the student athletes as well as the volunteer coaches. So again, this is not, this would not fall under our insurance pool with like MAE and any of that covers. And we would have to talk about, you know, the, you know, an, an M O U and an agreement with the individuals who are involved.
Yeah.
Where the liability insurance is coming from the league, not from Kent County.
That was one of my questions, the M O U's and who would be the entities that we go out and see these M O U's with? And you already explained it, the liability, who it falls under.
Yeah, so in working with Sid Pinder over in Queen Anne's County, who is their chief operating Yeah, so, um, in working with, um, Sid Pinder over in, uh, Queen Anne's County, who is their chief operating officer, but also oversees athletics. When this was first, first brought forward, uh, for approval in like Queen Anne's County, they, they had a sample MOU that they used. But obviously, anything that we do going forward, we will work with Dr. McComber's and, uh, have, um, you know, just make sure everything's all right.
And you had mentioned, uh, a feeder program for 4H. Has that already been discussed or is it just natural?
No, it exists.
Evolution that.
It exists.
Okay.
It exists and actually the coach from Queen Anne's County, was that, um, um, stakeholder, um, such, you know, he was the one that even said, you know, you guys get this going. You're already going to be ahead of where we are because Queen Anne's County courts doesn't have that.
Yeah, okay. I got one more question. And yes, this is a self-serving question. Can I come out to the field and see how this before? Cause I expect us to want, you all want us to vote next month. I definitely want to go out in the range and see the instructors shoot or things of that nature.
Kent Gun Club on Goose Hill.
What time?
Mr. Queen, I have a gun to bring. I will bring you, let you shoot.
I can look, I can bring my own.
We, uh, we'll get you coordinated, Mr. Queen.
Yes.
And Mr. Hempster will connect to take care of our board members and any other board members who may be interested.
Whoops. One final question. Seeing as this isn't coming on our budget, we are kinda, my concern is we start something and the finances, the sustaining goes away in two years. Um, how confident are we in our partners to successfully sustain this? So where if it grows, you don't come to us next year and say, hey, you got any money for this?
Mr. Fray, would you like to come to the podium?
And that didn't happen on the range, right?
Well, I.
Just to be clear, there we go. Yes, sir. Thank you. More dangerous.
I'm president of the local chapter of the National Wild Turkey Federation. And we've actually been working towards this for four years and banking money for these kids. Um, we have a ton of partners that have been waiting and calling and they're calling me and I'm calling Ms. Chris. We're, we're trying to get this moving. Um, I was just with the two owners of Molly's this weekend. They're like, what are we doing, guys? We're ready. We're anywhere the kids. They're actually building a Molly's in Easton. They're sponsoring Easton's team.
Hmm.
We're, we're behind.
That's what they told me when I did my research. Said we always lead to the party.
Yeah, we gotta, the, the community support is here and the dollars are here for as long as we can keep kids coming out.
I'll, I'll be honest, uh, even before I get to voting, my two major concerns were how this was going to get paid for and safety. And I think you all have kind of addressed that for me right away. One other question, when you get a gun in the state of Maryland, you have to go through 16 hours or something like that for a gun course. What will students have to do? They can't just show up because their parent legally can have a firearm in the car, show up and just shoot. What type of training are they going to get?
You have to go through either Hunter's Education, which is a 16 hour course like you're talking about.
Yes.
Or there is another certification in the, what was it there?
It was, um, it's through, um, the Clay Target League. Uh, I don't have the information right in front of me, but I'll, um, send it to you.
But on my committee, I have a guy who teaches hunter safety for the state of Maryland.
Yeah, cause I was told kids will have to, you know, go through like the training videos and things of that nature. Okay.
And, and, and on that point, the coaches have to also go through, you know, their own training through, uh, the, um, Clay Target League itself.
Good.
So he, here in Kent County, you kind of already hit because most of these kids, huh?
Yes.
So they've been through Hunter's Safe.
Yes.
They've got the training.
I, I, this is a no-brainer for our county and for what we're trying to achieve with the culture of sports.
Ms. Dorsey, did you have something you wanted to say?
Uh, yes. I was just going to say for those who do not, would that be the parent's responsibility or something that would happen after they sign up for the class?
For, you know.
The safety class and the hunting class or the skeet or.
As far as like paying for it or?
Yes.
Taking, taking the class.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to, if we have enough kids that who are, show great interest, their grades are great and they want to take the class. I can work with an instructor to get them, we can add classes.
That, that was said by a couple of individuals at our stakeholder.
Fray, is that class available online now? Would you still like to do your shooting part? Yes, you can take the class online, but there is an eight hour Saturday.
You'd have to do like actually on field. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And there are classes now just for the online people. They'll schedule a Saturday, but anybody that took it online can come, show up, do their field exercises that day and go home.
Ms. McKenzie, did it look like maybe you had some questions? No?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm so sorry that you guys had to wait this long to see this.
Ms. Dorsey, were you still talking?
I know what it was. I was going to ask, um, how does, uh, students sign up now that we have just heard about it?
Well, so we, we did do an, an internal interest survey, uh, with the folks that, that headed the meeting. We also surveyed our rising eighth graders, but you know, we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves without, you know, formally bringing this forward to you. And it, and it seems like it's moving in the direction. So I think what we can do is we can work with, you know, um, the high school and getting some, um, publications out there on, uh, on Facebook in Principal Hempster's, uh, Sunday, PING messages and, you know, gain some interest that way.
Yes, because I think some people have not heard about it, that maybe students and, you know, as, it's, well, similar to the ones that you probably have already.
Yeah, so multiple modes we will push out to make sure that students have the opportunity to, um, to, to know what is happening and to be able to, um, have an interest into coming out.
So, so just to reinforce, even though it's not going to be considered a inter, interscholistic sport, we're going to require our students to meet all the criteria for, for varsity level sport. I mean, their grades, their attendance, their behavior, all those kinds of things, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the first thing.
And what we're also going to do, we're also going to treat them though, you know, we're going to recognize.
Okay.
As varsity athletes.
Okay.
You know, we're still early varsity.
Nice, okay. Okay, uh, I, I can't see a downside to it, but that's going to be a question in a second. I feel like it's an opportunity to, you know, we, we know kids come to school for lots of reasons. Some kids only come to school for sports and I feel like this is a, a demographic that maybe we could bring in. It might be enough to make a kid come to Kent County High School if they thought they could be a member of a team like this. Cause nobody else in Kent County or some of the schools we're losing out to has that. Um, I've got one more thing, but I'm going to ask you first. Is there any reason, I, I know this is a double edged sword. Is there any reason why? Why, why would somebody not want this for their school?
I think the, the issue comes down to that it is not something that is covered by me.
Okay.
And that was a barrier.
Okay.
At, at first or someone, the other school system. What I will tell you is that there are nine school systems that participate in this across the state.
Mm-hmm.
Three are on the eastern shore. There are the public schools that participate. The rest are private schools. We would be the fourth eastern shore school and the 10th school state.
And it's just that education piece of it, uh, tradition, the opportunity, because I just don't think that, you know, sometimes you have the opportunity to talk about the safety and talk about the opportunities and who it would benefit for. So they think guns immediately and know this is not something that we want.
So a point that Mr. Hempster brought up that, um, this isn't an idea that just germinated last night. I mean, this, there's been this interest for a long time. So I want to say thank you to Dr. McComber for being open-minded about it and for the board to be open-minded about it. The, the other thing is that, I mean, we've had a lot of discuss, I mean, sports is very important to me. It's very important to Mr. Queen. I know it's very important to Mr. Rhodes. And one of the things that Kent County the last couple of years is we haven't had any junior varsity. We can't, for the most part, unless it's an individual like a state champion wrestler or a state champion swimmer, we have not been able to compete, you know, at that level because, you know, 18-year-old, understandably so, and 18-year-olds in a lot of ways can't compete against a 14-year-old. But you know what? We might not be able to beat you in football, but we might be able to shoot the pants off of you. And, and I think that's something to be proud of and, you know, being a, being a good marksman doesn't have anything to do with how big you are.
Agreed.
So I think, again, this is an opportunity. I, I don't see any reason not to. So I know we're not going to vote till next month, but I mean, you're getting very positive vibes from, from us, so.
Perfect. Thank you. To the point, um, I did bring this up, uh, four years ago when I took over, uh, as principal of Kent County High School.
Well, it's been longer than that because the capes have been beating the drum for years.
Right, and then, um, I took it, the levels that I needed to take and then it was, um, said, no, now's not the time.
Well, you got a board and a superintendent that seemed to be supporting.
And also with a round of applause, thank you all to not just giving up and not coming back after you got a note. And this is the type of engagement we have been talking about for the last six to eight months. And I commend you all on the presentation. I commend you all on, I'll be out there watching. You might, you might not can tell from the swag I got, but I am an avid shooter, so. I'll, I'll be very engaged in, in that sport if it passes the vote.
Yeah, and then I just say, why not for Kent County? Because it does align with, you know, the community's identity and we spoke about that and our mission. And then our students' needs because we've had multiple students that need this and want this and want to see this happen. So thank you for your time and your support and your vision for what's possible at Kent County High School and, um, and we will be back.
Well, we'll be, we'll be looking forward to a vote next month.
That's good presentation and it was refreshing to hear something new and enthusiasm from all parties, school and community. Good job.
Ms. Dorsey, Ms. McKenzie or Dr. McComber, do any of you guys have any more questions?
I, I just want to say thank you to the community and, uh, thank you, Ms. Hempster and Mr. Hempster and, uh, Mr. Hudson, uh, for bringing this forward. I, I think I have the benefit, I, for those who don't know, I spent, uh, 10 years in the US Army Reserves as a officer. And so I'm trained in weapons and I understand the importance of, of our young people having thorough and well-supervised training, right? It's the children, to me, when we think about the concerns today and weapons in schools, it's not the trained child who's well-supervised, who's learned a healthy respect for the power of that weapon. It's the unsupervised children who have access, uh, to weapons that would need to be afraid of. And so I just want to thank you, uh, for not giving up and like you said, thanking them for, um, their patience and persistence with that. I look forward to seeing our kids perform and, uh, you know, look forward to organizing anything for our board members who want to go and see. So thank you.
Cause it's going to, it's going to, uh, weigh on which way I vote if I get out there or not. Once again, self-serving.
Alrighty.
No football.
I don't know where you're coming up with that stuff, okay? Well, that's for another discussion, okay? We're only talking about trap and skeet tonight, okay? Alrighty.
Yeah, well, we're happy to, to see you here and we're happy for your son to participate once.
Agreed, yes.
That's right.
Alrighty.
We could do like a duathlon.
Gotcha, that's true. So now we are going to talk about the MAP presentation.
As, um, Ms. Jakomowitz is coming up, I want to orient everyone, we're trying to take a different approach. As you know, we are a board that likes to discuss things and, um, and.
I listened to the five minutes today.
Oh, thank you. So I'm introducing, uh, and this is our very first time doing it this way, but anticipate there'll be more of these where we bring presentations forward and we will have pre-recorded the presentation and people can watch and listen to the presentation um, ahead of time and you can pause it and go back and relook at the data charts and re-listen to the points. So that when we are together in person, um, we're not spending our time presenting the information, we're spending our time answering your questions about the information. So I know that this is a, a little bit of a different approach, but we'll get into swing. I've done this elsewhere with, um, uh, previous, uh, boards, uh, curriculum committee and, and we got into a flow around it and it worked really well. So, um, on that, what I've asked Ms. Jakomowitz to do tonight, uh, with our MAP or Measures of Academic Performance, which is our growth. Uh, we talk about growth and achievement all the time when it comes to data and academics. To hit the highlights, you can go back and look at the data charts. They're rather extensive. Um, and she's going to hit the highlights and we're going to, going to open it up for Q and A. Okay?
I got a question.
Yes.
Who was the narrator? Didn't sound like you.
It was Michelle.
So, thank you.
So thank you, Ms. Jakomowitz. I hope I set that up for you.
Okay, I'm actually not going to walk through the slideshow, but just sort of summarize the key points, um, that were part of the work that we did in putting the slideshow together. So as Dr. McComber's mentioned, um, the MAP data is from the spring of 2025 with a focus both on early literacy and also our district-wide growth goals. When we get to this point in the year, it's really an opportunity for reflection on our instructional strategies. And we're working together with our instructional leaders in the system to really determine where targeted support is still needed. So based on the information in the slideshow, when you have an opportunity to go through it again, as we have as well multiple times, five things really stood out to our leadership team. So the first piece is that early literacy is showing growth. But we also recognize that gaps still remain. For example, in first grade, there was an increase from 15.7% to 23.9% of students meeting or exceeding the MAP fluency expectations. Second grade also rose from 33 to 59 by the end of the year. These gains are encouraging, but most students are still not meeting fluency benchmarks. So.
Not to cut you off real quick.
Yes.
Is this something that's supposed to be a bill or just on, on a?
Yeah, well, I have, I can go to slides, but what we wanted to not do, she's hit, I just asked her to hit the highlights because the narration.
She's got the, the.
Got you. What you were saying, go back and look at it. Okay.
Does, so does it make sense if I just sort of go?
Yes, yes, yes.
Again, I know this is awkward because it's the first time we're doing it.
Typically do.
It's better.
So as a result of the, the data analysis, we must maintain momentum with the structured literacy practices. And you've heard us references throughout the year with Orton Gillingham and the explicit, um, emphasis in early reading skills and strategies. Kindergarten readiness is also a leverage point. This is the second bullet. And basically in the spring, 20 of 124 kindergarteners advanced to what we call sentence fluency. This really demonstrates growth, but also underscores the importance of mastery of those foundational skills. Daily focus on phonics, phonemic awareness and vocabulary is really what made all of this growth possible. So there's 20 out of 124 students are really extremely exceeding expectations in kindergarten. Our district goals that we set each year, we recognize that they are ambitious, but we do believe they are achievable. Um, ELA, our proficiency was to reach a 4% increase of 35% and math of 40, which was a 5% overall increase. I just wanted to share a reminder, and I know that you are all well aware of this, but for those that are listening to the presentation, our local goals are double that of the state expectations.
And we did that on purpose.
Mm-hmm, and we did that on purpose. We wanted to really, um, exceed the state expectations and also have a tight alignment between the goals that we're setting and instruction assessment and reteaching. So what we recognize is that to meet these ambitious goals, core instruction must be both consistent and high quality across the district, which is exactly what we're striving for with the shifts that we've made, bringing in, again, I don't want to continue to repeat this, but it's bringing in those structured opportunities like the Orton Gillingham as well as the comprehension focus in our early, um, childhood classrooms. So equity must drive our work. Our data does show variation across schools. Some are accelerating, but we also recognize that some schools appear to be stalled. So we are using school-level comparisons to guide where resources and coaching and leadership attention are most needed. But we also want to always be aware, where are the bright spots that are happening so that again, we can replicate best practices? We've, um, noticed that consistently both in ELA and mathematics, we saw glimmers of improvement both in Galena Elementary School as well as Kent County Middle School, which brought a lot of, of hope to, um, the direction that we're going. But we want to pay attention to equity and rec. But we want to pay attention to equity and recognize that that equity must drive our, our work. And that every team needs responsive instruction. So what we believe is this data is not something that we're going to just bring to you beginning and end of the year. It really drives those days on the calendar when students go home early and we meet as professional learning communities, also known as PLCs. Our teacher teams get together and they use this data to really unpack and analyze and determine the individual strengths and needs of each student. That allows teachers to adjust their pacing. It requires us to really group, not only for the whole class, but more importantly, or just as importantly, are for the small group instruction. And also, if something matters, we have to monitor it. And that's what we've been trying to really improve as a leadership team. We must monitor what matters on a regular basis. And this type of data really allows us to do that.
Ms. Jakomowitz, do my, if I just interject, I'd like to just highlight as well, when the presentation, when we're looking at this, you'll see some slides labeled level, students performing at levels three, four and five, which is the forty-first percentile. And we'll also see slides that students performing at level four and five, the sixty-first percentile. We are presenting both sets of data because the sixty-first percentile is correlated to college and career readiness. So if a child is performing in the sixty-first percentile year upon year upon year, by the time they hit tenth grade, they are really performing at that level of literacy where they can read college-level texts, make meaning of that and do work with that, right? Which is our target. When we include level three, oops, I went the wrong way. When we include level three, we're including students who are not necessarily right at that level of college and career readiness, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't be proficient on our state test, right? Because the question is, how does this data relate to our state achievement test, right? And the state achievement test, you really, it's, it's in between level three and four, right? If you can perform, let's say, approximating three point five or better, you're going to be proficient or better on our state test. So that's why you see two sets here, and I just wanted to take a minute to kind of explain that so that it matters to me that you understand this and you take time to look at this. I also just to highlight what Ms. Jakomowitz was saying, I always like to look at data trends, right? Because if you look at a single year in isolation, it doesn't really help you tell. Data is a flashlight. It helps us find our way and tell our story. So when we look at this trend data, I just want to highlight Garnett because Ms. Jakomowitz just highlighted that. Look at that. That is almost a twenty percent gain in twenty-four months, right? I mean, that's a, that's a trend that is moving in the right direction. Look at Galena. We see what a five percent gain, right? We see that the middle school is, is working through it, right? So I just want to highlight that I asked, as you go and look at this, you know what the difference between three, four and five and four and five is? And that you're looking at that trend, where not in a single isolated set of data, but what is happening? Are we moving in the right direction? And if so, at what rate, right? Because when we, we see some significant, now that's not to say we don't have improvement. You know, we're, we're not where we want to be yet, but we are moving. And I think the math data, if you look at it when we get there, is actually, I was doing a little happy dance earlier with Mr. Por around our data. So thank you for letting me interrupt you.
And if I could just jump in with one other piece, based on what Dr. McComas just shared, it's important to think through the difference between this local assessment, this NWEA benchmark that we use at the local level and the state assessment. And one thing that our school-based leaders notice year after year is that writing is really a struggle for our students. And that's the big difference between the MCAP assessment, when they have to write a written response, both in ELA and in mathematics compared to NWEA, where it's the short multiple-choice answer. So you're not seeing that emphasis that you'll see in the area of writing on the state assessment. So we're keeping that in mind and continuing to use that as part of the strategies that we emphasize throughout the school year with our instructional practice.
Question, question to that point, how do you address that and actually start to change it where the writing is not so big of a burden when it comes to testing?
I think one of the big shifts that we have made as a district is really making that part of our everyday unit approach to teaching reading. So when you look at the course of a unit of instruction, which is usually about six weeks, you're going to have a writing companion piece with every single unit of instruction. So our students will be exposed to different types of writing, narrative, opinion writing, persuasive. They have all the different types of writing in there, but they will be not just one and done, but have opportunities to engage in that type of writing and get feedback throughout the course of the year.
I, I don't think we should look at writing as a burden. I'm listening to that question because of course, that's been my profession. And, but the thing is, if you can write, you can do almost anything. So I think, you know, at, at first blush, it's like, gosh, my gosh, you have to know how to write to answer a math question? But we do, but I, I, I don't think we should look at it as something we just have to endure. I mean, we should embrace it because ultimately, it's going to make us so much better.
Absolutely. And what we know, and particularly in early childhood, is students have to be able to think it first, say it, get their thoughts out and then move to the writing. So it's all a process and it is going to open many, many doors for them and increase their chances for success, not only on this assessment, but on any assessment and in life. I mean, it's a skill they need forever. So if we want to quickly, did we want to look at math? I wasn't, I didn't plan to go through the slides because I knew that we presented those through the link.
Sure. If you don't mind, I will just real quickly highlight some math trends and then we'll open up to whatever questions that you have. And again, the, the data's all there for people to go back. But what I'd like to highlight here in math, and we'll, we'll look at three, four and five here. And I, I know this slide is busy because it has many grade levels and the percentages. But as I was going through, and again, I look at the trend and I just want to call out, if, if we look at this slide, we see kindergarten, we see an eight percent gain in the last two years. First grade has a nine percent improvement. Second grade has a nine percent. Third grade has a seventeen percent improvement. Fourth grade, a twenty percent improvement. Fifth grade thirteen percent and sixth grade eight percent. And so these are significant improvements when you're looking at the spring of twenty-three to the spring of twenty-five. And so I, I know that this slide is busy, but I would encourage you to go back and look. You're always going to see some fluctuation, right? And we know with our small-scale denominator is impactful. But when we look at again, this trend overall of, of increased performance, we know students in seventh and eighth grade, you know, there are students who were, I think, tremendously impacted by those disruptive years of the pandemic. But we know this year's fourth grade is the group that has been in school since the pandemic, right? So they've had the benefit of not having the level of disruption that the grades in front of them have. And you really, if you look across those grade levels, you see, we are moving in the right direction. Still significant work ahead of us, but we are growing and growing at good rates here. When we look at our system performance, moving in the right direction.
For the younger grades, but once again, when you get to that middle school, though, every chart, when you get to the middle school bars, it's kind of a, a, a drop. But I know with, with the strategic plan and you said this a lot over the last couple of months, kind of focusing on the middle part of the sandwich, so to speak.
Right.
Which should address some of those things.
Right. That's what we're trying to cultivate the conditions to, to really be responsive in those middle grades. We know our elementary principals and teachers and schools, the nature of elementary school is very responsive. And, and the pedagogy of small group instruction is very embedded in the way we teach at the elementary. When we get into those secondary classrooms, small group instruction is not typical pedagogy, but it needs to become typical pedagogy, right? The analysis, the, the frequent use of data to then drive that intervention and acceleration. And, and again, I, I think it's important to understand, what's the story underneath this data, right? When we look at students in grades four and younger, their whole school experience has been after the pandemics. They came in and they did not experience a significant disruption to their learning experience, where we know students in older grades, that pandemic hit at different points. When we think about eighth grade, five years ago, they were in third grade, which is a critical year for learning to read and reading to learn. And so I just offer that, you know, again, data is a flashlight. It helps us understand more deeply what our students, you know, how they're doing by name and by need.
Just like you described in reading, that big change, that big shift in third grade, the same is true for math. Because the one stumbling block year after year is fractions. And that happens right at that third, fourth grade level. So you see, I think, you know, that explanation is so true. And we are seeing hope for the future when you look at the early years and what's happening in building that solid foundation in fluency.
Let me ask this, because I do agree with the five-year mark of the eighth grade as being third grade is where a lot of the critical learning happens. As a superintendent, at what point will we as a school board stop using COVID as any excuse on why we're not excelling?
Well, first and foremost, I hope I didn't sound like I was making excuses. I know, but it's, some people will see it that way. And I think it's, you know, making excuses like, well, they're never going to be there. I'm not saying they're never going to be there and we're working hard, but you cannot, it's kind of like people, you, you cannot disregard the power of context and the impact that context has on, on people. And so I think it's important, see, because otherwise you look at that and you think, well, it's apples to apples.
Right.
And they're not apples to apples, right? They're very different experiences. And what we can see is the level of impact and that we have to continue to really reinforce those. Grant funds are gone, but the need is still there to intervene and, and lift up. So thanks.
And to that point, because I think you do it when you present and you definitely do it, Dr. McComas. When you look at that fourth grade and that jump and that being the first class to really have no interruption after COVID, to anyone, you can be like, okay, okay. But you know, the question prior was just to see the mindset of us as a school system and where we should be.
I think for me, my question goes to, you know, considering the fact that there was so much educational neglect that occurred during those years. How, how do we, because as a parent, because everything is so online. And I got to be honest with you, there's a real disconnect when it comes home and to try to know how to help your kid. To, I don't even know where her gaps are. Like I, I wouldn't even know where to start, how to identify that. And so as a parent, it's really easy to feel lost about how to help your kid and knowing, you know, what skills even need to be addressed and where to even start with that. It's just, I guess I just wonder, you know, I don't know, in middle school and high school. I'm not saying that, that there isn't some effort to try to educate parents. I'm not saying there's not. I'm just saying that I haven't received a lot over the years.
I appreciate that feedback. May I add one just thought related, related to that? And one of the things that Dr. McComas has asked our instructional team to do is to be very mindful of exactly what you're describing, the families that feel lost and don't feel connected or understand how they can help their child at home. So one of the steps that we took this year that happened late in the year, it didn't happen until spring, is really putting at the fingertip of every parent, resources for the unit in math that their child is learning. Not only are there sample problems, but there are videos. Because just like you're describing, if we're teaching in a different way than the parents may have learned to solve those problems, the child can get frustrated because that's not how my teacher taught me how to do it, right? So I think having access to tools like that, we hope, is a step in the right direction because we hear you and we feel that. We don't want it to be frustrating for parents. We want to make it where we are making it easier, opening up doors for parents and also better communication on our part. I will say that both Mr. Buckle and Ms. Melvin, they hear you as well. And they are talking to their staff about communicating more clearly. What units are we studying? How can we keep families involved of what's coming up next? And what resources are available, available to practice at home with that, so.
Well, also to the parent involvement and, and helping parents teach their kids or whatever. That's in, that was addressed in the strategic plan. You mentioned that a couple of, there are a couple of mentions during the course of that of, you know, whether it's a back to math night. I mean, I remember, this is a million years ago, but I remember my mom had to learn the, the new math, which is fifty years old now. But you know, she went to school to learn the new math so that she could help me when I came home. So am I correct? Did you mention that a couple of times in the strategic plan about ways to help parents help their kids?
Yes, and because I, I'm a big believer in that because I think, and I'll share my own experience as a mother of three. One of my three children really struggled to learn to read. And the kindergarten teacher was sending home little notes like, practice the letter, you know, M with, you know, your child. And so I'm like, okay, I wasn't getting it. The light bulb was not going off on me. My child is having a problem and like a real problem. And like, she needs help and I need to figure out. I wasn't, the, the teacher was sending home a message, but I wasn't receiving the communication in the right way. And what was lacking was a conversation. I needed that teacher to call me and say, you know what, I'm really worried about so-and-so right now. And here's why I'm worried and here's what I think we need to do. So along, you know, I am a big, I, I hear you and I agree with you. Parents are our greatest partner in helping to educate children. And they, if they don't know, and, and I don't think just an email or the little, little card I was getting as a mom, I wasn't getting the message. My child needed help and the teacher needed my help and I needed their help. And so to me, it really comes down to that one-on-one call, right? When we see a child not doing well, there needs to be a person-to-person conversation. And it needs to be specific, right? Like not just your child's not doing well, like, okay, what? They're struggling to write sentences. They can't do fractions. They're, you know, whatever the specific thing is so that we can get an action plan together. And that's when I really talk about going, I, I know I'm kind of focusing here in middle grades, but when I say we go all in, right? It is about every child by name and by need and, and that human piece of it, right? Because otherwise, we're just pushing paper, right? That digital message isn't, isn't cutting it, right? And we know, and that's why I really am trying to build up the robustness of the middle grades. Because what I know for certain is, and I won't preach long, everyone. What I know for sure is if students aren't performing at strong levels by the end of eighth grade, they, they run the risk of never getting caught up. It's really seventh to tenth grade, students come off the rails and they never get caught back up. And I have seen that as a middle school principal, time and time again. I was a high school administrator and teacher who saw when kids came to high school not performing at those levels. It is so paramount that these middle grades are strong in terms of everything you just said. If my child's not doing well, I need somebody to talk to me. I need to know what it is and I need to know what our action plan is. It's really just that simple. We are in the process, I did not specify this in the plan, but we are in the process of bringing one, a new resource related to student support team. And I can't, I can't. Yeah, branching minds. And it really is a place for us to capture all that and, and have a platform to help us keep up with those by name and by need plans. So, so yeah, I mean, that's, that's where the progress is to be made.
And the big, the big investment that our board has made on giving us easier access to data on a regular basis. So again, that is a priority next year for our school teams. When they are together, we have the commitment to give easier access to the data and to set up protocols so that when they meet, they have a clear agenda that they're working on to really get down and figure out what can we do to help each child. Can we understand what are their strengths? What are their needs?
I just want to say that I know that since Dr. McComas has been here, she's tried to, you know, open up the doors of communication between the school, parents and, you know, the staff and different things like that, administrative staff. Because to me, a couple of years ago or so, especially after COVID, it was closed down. I mean, I know you have to put the glass there, but it felt like your children was behind the glass and you're not allowed to even touch your child. So, you know, with that, I think now in order to really get everybody back involved, we have to really make that a big thing and let them know, it's changed. We need you back. We need you back. When I was raising my girls, the school, it was an open door so that you could come. And even in the earlier years, you volunteered, you were a class parent, you know, to help out. I used to help Mr. Silver and different things like that. But that changed, you know? And when that, between the computer and not understanding the math, you know, we could get the, you could do the problem and we could work it and it was right. But they would send them home with a big X and say, you did it wrong, because there was a new way of doing it. And this new way, it seems they have to go through so many levels or rules. Because there was a new way of doing it. And this new way, it seems they have to go through so many levels or rules, you know? That even right now, if I go in the grocery store and they don't have the computer, they can't even give me change and I still can do that with this mind of mine that's over 60 years old, you know? So I don't really understand how we're advantaging from that, but you know, the thing is, is that we need help in order to help our children. My children weren't, weren't able to get through school without my help. And it's not a one-sided thing. It's not just the teacher and then not the parent. It has to be both. Because these children really need help, not only in the school, but when they get home and out of the school. They really need extra practice because every child is not the same. So sometimes when they're in the classroom, there may be a group and sometime that's small that actually gets it and can move on to the next level. And there's some other, a great percentage that's left behind. They just act like they're there, you know, and they really don't understand. So they just drag along until we get to this eighth grade or whatever. And they didn't understand back in sixth grade. You know, and that's, that's not helping things. It's not helping them to be successful, you know? Um, if we have where the pandemic was a problem, I just feel like they needed a whole summer or two or three of having classes over the summer. And I know that's expensive in a sense. You know, maybe we could have had some volunteers that could fingerprint them, had them come in. I don't know. But they really needed that extra help that they cannot yet. They can get it, but, and I know we do a lot of intervention, you know, and I thank you for it. But it just seemed like they're still behind.
And just thank you for, for mentioning the challenges that we faced during COVID and how we are working to overcome and be more inviting. And understanding that parents are part of the partnership that we need to really help all students succeed. I do think the fact that all schools are moving to be community schools in Kent County is going to be a huge help in that area. Because the philosophy behind a community school is to bring us together and to have everyone be part of the solution to help our students be successful.
It almost forces community engagement.
I'm just sorry we lost it.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But, but we are rebuilding, right? And, um, and I think, you know, again, we still have significant improvement to do. But what matters to me when I look is by and large, things are moving in the right direction. Again, I mean, look at that fourth grade. That's a 20% improvement in 24 months.
I have one, one quick question, uh, for this. Uh, when you were presenting, you used the word equity. It's kind of a, a ambiguous term. What, what do we mean? What does Kent County Public School System mean when we use the word equity in education? Because a lot of people might just jump to race or, uh, 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 social economics. What do we actually mean when we make that statement?
Here's my statement. By name and by need, by name and by need. What John needs is different than what Mary needs is different, what Trish needs. By name and by need. That's what equity is.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you had that.
And I like the term, uh, monitor what matters as well. I like that a lot. So as long as we're monitoring what matters, what matters should always come to the forefront. So I actually liked that little catchphrase you said when you were talking.
We are definitely, um, working hard to, uh, monitor our data and make decisions in real time using data. So, I mean, we're, we're moving along. I want to thank the board for your support around trying to stand up these data platforms that we did not have. And, and you'll see our data presentations will become more, um, I think streamlined. And I appreciate the, the robust discussion because we could talk about a million things. But achievement is our superior performance, superior performance is what we're trying to get to. So, and we won't get to it if we're not talking about it, but.
Thank you.
And thank you.
I do like the format or at least testing it today. Like I do like it because she touched streamline good points, but we still can have a robust conversation without sitting through 40 slides.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jackamowitz, for trying the new, new approach. Thanks, everyone.
Uh, finally, Pastor Toll.
Yes, we're standing it up.
Alrighty, the pre-K expansion MOU. Thank you for your patience, uh, Presbyterian Church.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Reverend Tollard's here. Oh, yes. He was here for two things this evening. Good night, evening, Mr. Fry.
Uh, good evening, President McGee, members of the board, Dr. McComas. Um, I'm here tonight with our pre-K expansion team, Dr. Wendy Keen, uh, Director of Special Education and Ms. Gina Jack-Moitz, Director of Teaching and Learning. We're here with our, uh, community partners, Reverend Joel Tollard and, um, Mr. Ed Frye from the Presbyterian Church of Chestertown. Responding to the mandate and the blueprint for Maryland's future to expand access to quality early childhood education for the students who are, um, demonstrating the most need. Last month, we gave a presentation on our plans to, to create a three-year-old pre-K program for tier one students at the Presbyterian Church of Chestertown. In the time between last board meeting and now, um, it was my pleasure to greet each of you with Mr., uh, with Reverend Tollard at the church to give you a tour of the intended space. And then to, to provide time for our legal representatives to go back and forth to create an MOU that would allow us to partner in that collaboration for that, uh, demographic of students. So we're simply here tonight to, um, have your vote on that MOU and to have a formal signing, uh, with both parties.
Well, let me say this, um, good job, Tom Porter, team, Reverend Tollard, with the whole process. Um, for me, it's a no-brainer for our school system. This could also be one of the things that offset some of the student enrollment, which, you know, we talk about a lot by grabbing these kids a year earlier and introducing them to our public school system, uh, the facility. Answered all my concerns when I was there with you all on the report. My key concern was safety. And once I heard how safety would be, uh, at the utmost and forefront of what we're doing with our students, the rest of it for me was already a no-brainer. So I, I, I liked the presentation last month. I liked the idea. I like the tour and I like everything that we have kind of composed for this MOU. So I just wanted to say that because I already know how I'm voting.
Thank you.
Do, um, does anybody else have any comments?
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah. I think it was, I think it was good that we were all able to get there. Uh, and when, uh, we went sort of staggered so that we didn't violate any Open Meeting Act thing, Ms. Dorsey and I happened to be there together and, uh, Principal Rose and, uh, Beth with the, um, Judy Center happened to be there when we were there. So they were able to look at it from a different perspective than we as board members probably would have. So that was really good that they asked those questions and our attorney was able to go there today and any questions he may have had about separation of church and state and those kinds of things were all um, ironed out. So I think we all feel comfortable.
Very.
Uh, I don't know if there's anything else. Anybody has any questions? I think right now, if it's okay with you, we'll just, I'll just ask for a motion.
I think so. I'll just, um, share. I know Mr. Rose isn't with us. He too went to visit and he asked me to communicate that he, he was, he had a positive experience. He was supportive and that was a good idea. Um, just to make sure that his comments got shared.
So Trish, the motion would just be to approve this moving forward and signing of the MOU?
Was there anything you guys needed to add or needed anything from us other than to move forward? I mean, we had a very, we had a very comprehensive presentation last month that I think answered a lot of questions, but
Yeah.
nothing beats being able to be there firsthand and really to envision what the space was going to look like, what it looks like now and what it's projected to look like. So I am looking for a motion to approve the MOU with the Presbyterian Church. Okay.
Facility.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I was just kind of going by the, the agenda here.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment real quick that I, I just, it, my, my children are older now, but I certainly haven't forgotten what it's like to be at home and needing to go back to work and, and struggling with the, the cost of that. And I just really think you're going to do some great things for families. I know it has to start somewhere. And so there's going to be limitations with the amount of children you're able to serve in this location, but, but I, I, I know how much of a help that that was at that, when my kids finally could go to school and the freedom that that gave us so that I could go and return to make, make money again. And, and so, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just where it's at and it's, it's just a wonderful thing. So.
One quick question, and I don't, I don't know if necessarily this number should be something that's said out loud, but since this is a facility lease agreement, is there a set number in this MOU of how much we're, uh, paying for the space?
Yes, and that's all part of the grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have all that figured out.
So to just sort of compliment what Ms. McKenzie said, it's sort of serving at least, at least two purposes. One is it's allowing parents to get their kids in school earlier, which alleviates some, some problems. The other thing is that kindergarten readiness and you talk about early intervention and getting kids to school as early as possible. There was a time, uh, Kent County led the state in kindergarten readiness because we
Above the curve.
Well, we had universal pre-K long, I mean, it's, it's a requirement blueprint. We've been doing it for 12 years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I can't see that this is going to be anything but an added benefit to us.
Agreed.
So at this point, to rephrase that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the lease with the Presbyterian Church for a three-year-old program, which will serve just right, if I'm correct, the Garnet Catchman area, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. One additional clarification, um, just for everyone at home who's hearing, oh, there's a new program. This is again, we mentioned for tier one, uh, students. So this is income eligibility. Families who are living in the Garnet Catchman area who are at or below 300% of the federal poverty level.
Right.
And real quick also, maybe Dr. McComas will talk and speak to this. For families that are interested in learning about this material, where can they go to hear about this information and this new, uh, opportunity?
Uh, so families, if you're in the Garnet Catchman area, I would encourage you to call, uh, Garnet Elementary School. You could speak with Principal Brenda Rose or with, um, Kiki Jones, the, uh, secretary there. We have prepared a frequently asked questions document, which answers pretty much every question imaginable with regard to this program, why we're doing this and who is eligible, um, for it.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for that motion.
I'd like to bring a motion to approve the facility lease agreement.
Alrighty. Mr. Queen has the motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Ms. Dorsey has the second. Is there any other comments or questions before I call for the vote? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Ms. Manley. Thank you very much and thank you for the opportunity.
Everyone involved, for sure, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job with that.
For effort. Uh, thanks, Mr. Porter and Reverend Tollard for your patience and.
Good job, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, guys. Alrighty, um, Dr. McComas, you're going to talk about student attendance procedure?
Yeah. So this is a procedure. So I'm really just bringing this forward as information. Um, our principals worked with, um, our student support team in the central office to make some, um, refinements to our attendance procedure. We had, um, some misalignment in there. So for example, we were actually, according to our procedure before, not aligned with the state definition of chronic absenteeism. One of the things that's, um, important is to understand for everyone is while, um, there are, the state establishes 10 codes around attendance. You may have a student who is out for a lawful attendance, but they are a lawful, lawful absent. However, it is still considered an absence under chronic absenteeism, right? Because the bottom line is you're either present for learning or you're not present, whatever the reason. Um, and so our principals really surface, uh, the need to come together and do some revisions. We had a work group and we're bringing forward those revisions, um, in this procedure to make sure that our alignment is more, um, appropriate, uh, to the, to, to the, um, overall state, uh, aspect. And so, um, you know, typical things that still apply, I think one of the things we clarified in there that was important for parents is you can send a note explaining that your child is out for a lawful reason. It is however, um, still coded as an absence, right? It doesn't, writing a note doesn't excuse your child from being absent, that the state attendance procedures don't work that way. So that's really what this is. And I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that I provided you, you know, kept you in the loop on that because this will be in our handbook for this upcoming year.
So would that be considered an unexcused absence?
Depending upon, oh, like if your child is sick, they, it can be, um, an excused absence. What excused means is they are, they can have access to make the work up, right? Um, but it doesn't mean like it doesn't count as a day of absence.
Okay.
Right? And, um, and we've had some parents, the way our policy was written before, we had some instances where parents.
Saying I wrote the note.
Right. So my child shouldn't have all these absences. Well, the truth is you, child is absent and I, and it may be that they're eligible to get the makeup work.
Right.
Uh, but that still builds the chronic absenteeism and that's still ultimately, we have to walk down that path of, of truancy intervention. Uh, we cleaned up some of the language around the, um, the local truancy court. I think the name is slightly changed, but it's just keeping up with contemporary terms.
Do you foresee just this, because I look at this as a minor adjustment to what was already there? Do you see this being a big, uh, issue with parents who kind of were doing the, I wrote the note, they're excused?
Well, I do think that our, we have a lot of work to do with parents who struggle to get their children to school. I know I had one, um, conversation, uh, with a mom who she has, uh, a number of children in our school system. Um, one of whom she had already been to truancy court, got that child, um, and that, that was an older child. Uh, got that child kind of in order. But their elementary child, right? Sometimes people, particularly the earliest grades, sometimes people think that early childhood education is like babysitting. Like it's optional.
Yeah.
Um, and they don't always understand the impact it has on their child's long-term success when they have holes in their learning, right? So, you know, it's, it's really, I think each of the truance, the chronic absentee cases, you really have to work with the family because you need to understand what exactly are their barriers? What's, what's at the heart of it? Is it they don't believe early childhood actually is that important? And they think it doesn't really matter that their child's missing school? Or is there, uh, you know, there's always kind of complexities to attendance issues. So, um, our, our PPW is very, um, diligent and committed.
For the people at home, what's a PPW?
PPW stands for pupil personnel worker. They're, they're, they're experts who really work across school systems. Every school system has them to work around attendance issues. They go out and do home visits. They go out and knock on the door and say, Mary needs to get the school, what's, what's holding us, what's our problem? How can we help you solve that problem? They're the ones that go and help represent us at the courts when we get to that level of, uh, taking parents to court over, uh, attendance issues. So again, these, overall, these were minor. These were really brought forward, uh, the principal.
So I do have some short questions. Okay. Um, under the standard section for E, it talks about, um, must provide the necessary certification for lawful absences. I was looking under the definitions. I didn't see any definition for necessary certification or like, uh, and, and under section F, it said unlawful absences, we will require a lawful excuse, but there's no definition for lawful excuse. And to me, there seem, they seem to be probably the same thing. I don't know if they are or not.
Right. It's gone back to the state definitions of those things.
So I don't know, is there any way to outline what those definitions are in the policy of, of lawful excuse?
Nope, we can go back and add that.
And then.
And what section? I'm sorry to.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. We have so under standards and then both E and F, I don't know if necessary certification and lawful excuse are the same thing. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll clarify what the state definitions are.
And then, um, on section five, it looks like section five is being removed completely. Is, is then that means there is no chance for reinstatement of grades? Is that my understanding or?
Yeah, they're, they're going to have to follow the regular makeup of work. And so that's where, it was kind of like a redundancy piece there. If they're following, if they're working through the excused absences to do their makeup work, that gives them that opportunity to get their grade back where it needs to be.
Okay. And then under six, um, the statement says the makeup provisions of the grading criteria distributed to the student and submitted to the principal by the teacher. So each, um, teacher then has their own. I, I guess when I, when I think about that as a parent and then trying to understand, um, and, and I, and I know it's not that simple, but like it, it gets to be very dicey when everybody's got a different way of whatever those makeup provisions are. And everybody defines that differently. And so if you have a, a, if you're a parent of a middle schooler or a high schooler, and everybody's got different makeup provisions, that can just be confusing. And so I didn't know if there was any way to make that more uniform or is that, I don't know what the goal is there.
I do agree with that makeup, uh, part.
Yeah.
I have kids in high school and middle school.
In elementary, like you have less teachers. So it's not as much of an issue because there's just naturally less.
I agree. Because they might go to a doctor's appointment in my household on the same day, which a doctor's know a letter from us. But then when it comes to the makeup, it's not. it's not cohesive and the same. This one is, well, I get this time and this time to make this up, and then this one might say, well, I get two weeks to make this up. And you're like, where's the difference? Whether it's a test, whether it's a homework assignment. So, I kind of agree with that kind of outlook on that.
Well, what we can do is clarify in syllabus, right? So, the beginning of the course, the, the teacher should identify what that policy is, so you know it upfront. Because some courses, as you know, run year-long, some courses run semesters.
Correct.
And so, their timeframes that they're working in can vary as well.
Yeah.
So, I, but I do hear what you're saying around making it clear and understandable.
Right.
And, and realistic, right?
So, it doesn't necessarily have to be uniform, but you're right. If you spell it, that's like knowing the consequences before you take an action, you know?
Correct, right.
The syllabus we're making you.
Right, well, and that, well, what that will do is communicate clearly, right? And, and to me, if you've got, like if Ms. McKenzie and I are teaching both 10th grade English teachers, well, we should be consistent in our grading with that, you know what I mean? But, you know, the biology teacher may have labs that require a different amount of time to come in and do the lab. So, I think that's where acknowledging sort of the nuance of the different contexts, contents as they get older. But I, I agree with you, middle school in particular is the hardest area, because their organizational skills at that age are developing, right? As opposed to like a 17-year-old who you expect them to start having some agency around them. So, taking in light, and I'll go back, I'll go back to the team to talk about that. And I'll talk with our middle school administration in particular, find out what they're doing across, we don't have enough, I shouldn't say, we aren't organized in a grade-level teams, which typically is where you can, you, you uniform that, you know, like all sixth-grade teachers are doing it in a certain way.
So, I'm going to, I'm sorry, refinish your question.
That's it, thank you. Thank you for bringing this question. Clarify.
I do, I see that you have something for chronic absences, but do you have anything for same thing with, like a excessive amount, like?
Yeah.
I see where it says already.
Yes, so every school has like their attendance team, where they're monitoring students who are not only absent, but the ones that come late and leave early. Interestingly enough, at elementary schools, it's, you can have patterns where you see parents pick children up early at the end of the day, and then they're missing whatever is being taught that last hour of the day. And sometimes parents don't realize how that accumulates and impacts their child. It's the same as being late for an hour every day. And so, our school attendance teams do monitor that and reach out to have conferences with parents around.
Is the only thing needed is the conference? I mean, after, you know, you have so many.
Yeah, yeah, well, what happens is it does ultimately end up impacting their grades, because they are missing, their skills are missing, right? Like if we're teaching fractions and your child's absent when we're teaching fractions, it ends up having an impact on their grade as well. But the bottom line is, we try to work with parents around that. And again, the younger the, the child, the more we know it's an adult, the parent, you know, that we're trying to work with to get them, to get the little one to school. You know, middle school kids, they're kind, obviously, they're, I mean, I know that sounds redundant, but they're in that middle, right? Parents are help, expecting them to get where they need to be, and, right? But they're not all the time, and of course, high schoolers are, you know, right?
Some of them are being still transported.
Right, right.
And when the car starts up, they can't drive.
Right.
So, that's why I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, is it any consequences pass? Just, you know, talking, because I know that with the absences, you, if they have a certain amount of them, then they take their grades, you know, regardless of what they are.
Right.
And then they have to do better the next time they-
To begin. Yeah, yeah, well, and that's the thing, like the, if, if they're missing work, they can make it up if it's appropriate that they're missing, right? So, like even just for example, remember, we just last month passed the telehealth, right? So, if I miss part of my calculus class, because I'm going to go to a telehealth meeting, well, that's an excused absence, so I can have access to make up what I missed. I may have to come after school to get the teacher to explain it to me, but I have access to make that up to keep my grade up. If I'm just cutting my calculus class, because I want to go hang out with my boyfriend, right? Well, then that's not an excuse, I don't have access to make that grade up. I'm going to, that's going to impact, my grades going to work towards failing.
One, one quick question. When does this take place? Because I don't, is this like a living procedure? Like today, the rules were before the edits, and then Friday, all this-
Oh, I wouldn't change midstream, that's why, I mean, believe me, the principals would have had me change, I mean, they were, they were talking to me about this in December. And because they're very, they want to get it right. And, and I said to them, I said, well, we don't change rules midstream. I don't believe in that. So, I said, we'll get our work group together, work through this. I'll, I'll take the feedback back to refine that. And, and the goal will be to have an updated procedure in this year's student handbook. So, it's published upfront.
Okay, cool.
I, I've got a question. I know, I want to say a lot of times, but I don't know, that might be too sweeping of a generalization. But many times, when our procedures are brought to us for information, the changes are sort of driven by the state. There's a change in language or aligning or whatever. So, I'm wondering how much of the, the change in this is reflected in that? Reason I ask is, some of our policy, our procedures woefully have not been looked at for years. This is not one of them. I'm looking at how often, I mean, this is the, the third time in four years. So, I'm thinking that it's getting a, a lot of eyeballs. So, I'm thinking that maybe the changes are driven more by what, what the state's telling us?
Well, remember during those crazy pandemic years, the state made some adjustments around attendance? And, and so, I think that may be why it was more recently updated. This really surfaced because our principals were really working through and looking at, and recognizing that we were to some degree contributing to our own-
Well, attendance, you know, is one of the things that's a high school graduation, you know? School systems are graded on their attendance, although what came out at the ASMEC conference, it's 94% across the board, right?
Right.
Yeah, and then there's just the, the obvious thing, if you're missing school, your own personal, in addition to whatever slap on the wrist you might get, it's going to be reflected in your personal grade. So, yeah, that's, that's a consequence in itself.
There, there is a natural consequence, right? There is a natural consequence in addition to whatever-
Official consequences, yeah.
Right, and I think that, that, to me, the challenge with consequences and attendance is, are you actually making the situation worse? I'll give you an example. I had a, when I was a high school administrator, I had a young man who cut class a lot. And of course, then the teacher was angry, because the kid was cutting class, and the teacher wanted me to suspend the kid. I said, well, if I suspend the kid, they're missing more class, right? And so, I said, that's not a meaningful consequence. What was a meaningful consequence is he had to come to Saturday detention with me and spend three hours getting caught up on his work that he missed, right? So, that, that was a real consequence. He was missing out on his free time. He had to, had to actually sit down, and I had to sit with him to get him to get some work done, right? But to suspend the kid, just actually was digging the hole deeper for the, the student and the teacher, because then you're going to have a student who ultimately is failing the class, who then has to, guess what, be back in your class next year, right? And so, I think that that's, that's the trick with attendance, is you've got to find, what's the consequence that doesn't make the, the whole worse? But actually is something the student doesn't want to actually deal with. Like, let me tell you, Dr. McComas, eight o'clock on Saturday morning, to do, to do, you know, English work with, it was not what he wanted to deal with.
You don't find many people like you.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you, but you'd be surprised. There's lots of school administrators that, you know, do things like that.
One, one parting question.
Thank you.
One parting question. Do we have data that maybe, because we're talking about attendance in the future, we can hear about truancy and see the impact of how many students actually are being affected by it?
Yes, yes, and I think Mr. Porter and I were just today looking at some of our data visualization tools with Power School that we were bringing one, and next year, we will be able to, to do that.
And, and with that, and, and I know this is foreshadowing, with that, will we take the, because you never know why a kid, we talked about poverty today, we talked about mental health, addiction. How empathetic are we going to be to those causes that may affect actual attendance?
Well, I think, you know, I think both Ms. McKenzie and you raised a, a great point, right? Like, you know, just because you have challenges doesn't excuse you from getting done what you need to get done. It makes it harder, and you have to be open to resources and support, but it doesn't excuse you, right? Because at the end of the day, this is about making sure our young people are prepared to be adults in the world who contribute economically, politically, socially, right? Who lead that next. So, at, at the end of this, it's, it's really about how do we, how do we build them up, right? We can't afford to just flush people away.
Yeah, because I'm a big component of, just with community work, I've dealt with a lot of people in need, in poverty. It's, it's excuse why they can't do what's expected of them, and I like to see the onus put on them. If you work hard enough, of course, you're going to need help at times, but that's the part, I, I don't want us to baby people who are not coming to school, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, it's important to work, to not reinforce learned helplessness, right? And I think that that is, you know, when I have, you know, over the decades when I've worked with students who often are facing, they and their families are facing many barriers to success, there, it can sink, you know, you can, what can sink in is a despair and a hopelessness, right? And this belief that I can't overcome.
Yeah.
I don't believe in, in reinforcing learned helplessness. I also believe in acknowledging what are real challenges, right? And so, that bearing witness to whether it's addiction, you know, I mean, addiction is not easy to break, right? But you have to, and so, many people have to add it again and again and again before they can overcome it, right? Because biochemical systems are real. You know, so it's not just like I choose to be unsuccessful, there's, there's a lot at it. Sorry, I got, I'll get off my high horse.
Let's, uh, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for the feedback. I will take that back to the team, we'll get that worked out.
All righty, Ms. Stewart, is that you next, my friend?
Yes.
With her beautiful smile here today.
Good evening, President McGee, Dr. McComas, members of the board.
President Trish, to you.
You and your land.
Tonight, we're going to go over the expenditure and revenue report. Tonight, the report is just going to look a tad different, and I do, will explain what that is. I have noted on this report preliminary, because we are still in the process of reconciling. I look to have our grants reconciled by next month, and then next month, I would be bringing a budget amendment forward to you, but I will explain all that in detail. Please note, this is not the next time that you will see the final. June 30th is when the auditors will come and present the budget to the board. So, when we're looking at fund one expense, we have received about 40.9 million for fund three. There were no projects, middle school, we're still in the process of that, but no funding for that this year. Fund five, for our food service, we've received about 1.5 million. That does not include our June claims, so that is still pending. And then fund seven, nothing for that. So, cash receipts as of, preliminary cash receipts as of June 30th, 2025, When we look at this current expense fund, so as you can see, we've expended about, on, on average, about 90%, leaving about 83.8 thousand. Again, this attributes to the recodes not taking place. I want to highlight where it has fixed charges of $355,000. That mainly is coming from our grants. When we do recode, that will be reduced. Our maintenance is, our maintenance and operations are-
Can I ask, can I ask what you mean by recode?
We will be moving their benefits from the local funds to the grant.
Okay.
And one other question to that point. And when you say reduce, would that be the percentage of 105%?
Yes, so essentially, it could go from 355,000 in the negative to a positive of 100 grand remaining, because you're moving those grant expenditures off of local into the grant.
Thank you.
And that's the same, that essentially goes for everything else. I'm going to point out administration, because in administration, that's also under the Office of Finance, where indirect cost expenditures are charged. So, once, once we do the indirect cost revenue calculation, that will be reduced as well. So, essentially, didn't want to do a budget amendment to essentially, because let's just say, when we do the reconciliation, and it's showing a negative now, but then, once we do the reconciliation, it could be a positive. So, you don't want to have to adjust more money or less money than you should. It will give us an actual picture of where we are.
Mr., I, I know you explained the recode. Would it be fair to also characterize that as sort of essentially the way those grants work? It's that reimbursement?
Yes.
Right, so when you hear recode, just think reimbursement, because the way a lot of these grants work, we put the money up upfront, then we basically charge, you know, charge the grant what we had to put out, and then we get reimbursed. So, you see that that creates like the cycle.
A month, right, or so, yeah, okay.
And that's why, going back, as you were saying earlier, when there was those grants, because we had, we were up on, on our stuff, we only, it was like 7,000 that we might not have gotten reimbursed for, but in the end, that worked out.
Okay.
Yes, and just FYI for that, for any of our code of funding, we did receive all, all of our funding for that, so that you are aware. We're going to go to our school construction, that's still remain the same, just to remain for tennis courts. We anticipate that for fiscal year 26, you will see expenditures for school construction.
Okay, is that going to be, is that lighting? Was that elementary school lighting, or?
Our lighting company project.
Well, we're, we're pursuing some grants to upgrade the lighting in the high school along where the cafeteria is, you know, that long dark hallway. I believe we've come across grant funds to be able to, to work on that.
Yeah.
Elementary schools already got their lighting, right?
Oh, yes, that was through a different grant.
Okay.
And then our food service, on average, we've expanded about 80%. To note, we are not in the red for food service. Essentially, we had about a $205,000 fund balance. When Angie comes up to do the request to go recording, she can explain more in detail. But this 65,000 that's encumbered is the serving line that we were going to put at one of the schools. Can't remember which school that, at Garnet Elementary School. Essentially, we can reduce this encumbrance, essentially, to put money back into food service. Like I said, we have to net our revenues against our expenditures, and so, we're not looking to, we're looking to have a little fund balance with food service. I'm not anticipating too much, because we did utilize our fund balance for food service to upgrade our equipment in the kitchens, upgrade pots and pans, different equipment that's used to cook for our students, so.
Question, when you say service line, is that the actual line, students standing to get their food?
Yes, and the warmer, I think that's the, pretty much the warmer. Angie is here, can, that can attest. Angie, if you want to come up in.
In the holding area, so.
So, it's not really adding another line, it's just adding the hot and cold bins that's on the line? Would that be right?
Basically, it's all removed at this point, the old line is out.
This is what's going on in Garnet right now, right?
So, we couldn't get the parts to fix when it would break. So, I think we were down to two hot wells at this point out of four, and so, it was just hanging on. So, we were able to-
All right.
And then our restricted funds, this as well, we are still reconciling our restricted grants, and where we're going to finalize for fiscal year 25, so that will actually increase at the end.
The 54%? That's one of the more restricted, that's the one we actually, actually have to wait until you do your entire job for that one, correct?
Essentially, we actually have to upfront the cost first and then get reimbursed. These percentages are on an average, so essentially, 50%, we are expending of our restrictive fund.
Well, let me, let me ask this, like, the school year is officially over. How does this work if we're out of the school year, and we're still only 54% to where we need to be? What is it like, maybe the next school year, it goes into, will this fulfill?
Yes, so what's incorporated with the restrictive funds is also carryover funds. Title one being one grant- Title one being, um, one grant that does have carryover capabilities. So in one year, you could really have three title grants opened up at the same time, because they're supposed to use their carryover funds first before going, before going to the next funding. Special ed is another area as well, medical assistance billing, there's carryover with that. And essentially, you have to use the old funds before you tap into the new funds. So the grants could kind of build up, up with each other from year to year.
If I may just add, why some of that, why that does happen is, um, these would be federal dollars. You know, the fiscal year starts July first, but by the time we actually receive this year's fiscal dollars, it might not be till January or February, right? So by the time it works its way from the feds to the state, from the state to us, we can, I've, I've received title grant funds when it was February. And I'm like, well, fifty percent of the year's already gone, I'm just now getting the money. Uh, and so what happens is, it, you get this extended time window, right? So instead of it coming in July first and being spent by July, June 30th, it can usually become like an eighteen, sometimes twenty-four month spend out window. Because they know by the time you're getting it, half that original window is gone. So that's how you end up with, you might have title one fiscal year twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-five. Oh, and then in four months, we're getting fiscal year twenty-six coming in.
Got you.
And they always want to just use the old money first, as she said.
Understood.
And then also, a part of year end process is that we have to wait to get all of the invoices. There may be some invoices dragging that we still have to process and send out, um, that were for June, that we didn't receive until July or probably early August. So that also goes into play with reconciling. And then at the end, just a normal overview of funds between receipts and expenses.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Noel?
Yep, she's coming up.
Good evening, President McGee, board members, after McCommiss. Um, purpose of this memo is to request for approval for us to piggyback off of, um, HPS, uh, master group agreement for a new food provider, uh, through Gordon Food Service. Basically, we'll be switching from Cisco over to Gordon. Uh, we had a cost analysis done, they can save us a significant amount of money per year.
Yeah, I saw that, what, fifty-four thousand or something like that?
Six, I think.
Uh, we've probably been with Cisco for a long time, haven't we?
I think.
And they're, are they out of Pocahontas? I, I think of them like, that's, they're the only trucks they ever see.
Yeah.
And where's Gordon?
So Gordon is in Aberdeen.
Okay.
It is a company that really kind of is, is heavy up in.
Like Cecil Harford, okay.
Um, Philly, that area, but they are progressing down. The great thing about this group and Gordon specifically is that they cater really to school systems and to health. So like hospitals.
Okay.
Um, so because we're so, with the USDA guidelines for, for, has to be whole wheat, has to have low sodium, has to have, it's very difficult sometimes to find what we need. So it's great to have a company that's really, um, knowledgeable about that and, and able to provide an abundance of food options to where with Cisco, we're finding product availability is just becoming pretty scarce. This year with the USDA, they're lowering, lowering the, um, sugars again, it's a consistent thing. They go back and forth with the sodium and then the sugar, so getting to the point where it's hard to find.
So who do we thank and credit for finding Gordon for us?
Cecil County jumped ship last year.
Really?
Went to Cecil, went to Gordon, and they, I met with Scott, um, and Kate there in Cecil County Food Service, and they raved, they said they've been very, very happy, overwhelmingly happy. And I trust them very much, so, um, I've met with the, the rep. She came and spent a whole day with me, just really kind of diving into everything and, um, felt very confident that not only was the company good, but her ability to, um, kind of walk us through it and make sure that it goes seamlessly at the start of the school year.
Well, this just, and I could read it, I didn't, but so I will show that ignorance. Is it just a one-year contract? I mean, how much are we committing ourselves to? If for some reason, it doesn't pan out to be as great as Cecil said it was.
Right, right.
Okay.
So it's, it's for one year.
Okay.
But then we have the option to renew.
Okay.
Two, five years.
Sounds awesome, okay.
A question like that, when you see, let's say I'm going to the grocery store, and I know it's a little different here, but I'm going to the grocery store and I'm used to spending a hundred bucks for set items of food, and someone comes along and tell me I can get the same items for sixty dollars. I'm going to expect quality drop off? I'm going to expect, uh, maybe not, it's great, uh, you know, the taste to be a little bit off? Is that something that we look into or pay attention to?
So, there's kind of set manufacturers who are really geared towards food service, K through twelve food. And it's, so it's a lot of the same items. Gordon just has more of them. They have brought in these specific vendors who are making schools specifically for the school system. So it's because they're so knowledgeable in that, they've really, because Cisco, if they bring in something that's whole wheat with no sodium, no sugar, they can't sell that at Food Lion, and they can't sell that at, you know, Bayside's not going to buy it to sell it. So, so what they've done is geared specifically towards healthcare and, and food service specifically in the school. So it's, it's going to be a lot of the same items I was going to get with Cisco. I can just count on it being there and, um, have more options of it. So, uh, yeah.
Wild saving fifty-six thousand dollars to school.
Yeah, so, so the way we're doing it is we're piggybacking off of a buying group, basically. Instead of the normal going through, you know, I'm piggybacking off of Caroline County. We're doing a buying group, and this buying group, again, they focus towards food service and healthcare. So we can do many things with them. Um, so it's kind of, um, you can even do furnitures for the schools, equipment for the schools. So because they're really geared towards that, and it's all they do, they're able to buy, their buying power is bigger. So they're going to get better deals, which then they can pass on to, to us.
So one final question, and this might be more of Alicia to answer, I don't know, maybe you can. So we already approved the budget for next year. And I, we have a set number for food. And we're seeing that we're going to be fifty-six thousand shorter. Is that something where we can move that money to another place in food service to kind of?
Basically, go to our fund balance.
Okay.
Um, if we had an emergent need, if our, if our truck, our cooler truck broke down, or.
Like it did a couple of years ago.
So the savings can be implemented elsewhere within the food budget.
Yeah.
Alright.
Are there any other questions or comments? Already, I'm looking for a motion to approve the piggyback off the HPS School Funding Purchasing Program with Gordon Food Service.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie has the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Queen has the second, any more comments or questions? I call for the vote all in favor. I, it is unanimous, Ms. Manley. Alrighty.
Thank you.
The budget book.
Alright, so, the budget book I'm going to go over with you tonight. I will ask that after, pretty much, what I'm going to do is go over like the first section, which is like revenue comparison. I will ask for questions at that time, and then I'll go to each category and ask for you to ask your questions at the end of the category, so I can just go through it. Um, because really, the biggest thing about this budget book that I want to, well, in my opinion, I think more time should be spent, if it does warrant discussion, is the appendix. That is really what matters. Um, but we're going to start with the, I got my, let me scroll this up for you. We're going to start with our revenues. Now, as you know, we did not receive our revenues until about two days before June 30th. And what ended up happening with our revenues is that essentially, this number here for Blueprint Coordinator, it was not, it was in that state aid calculation when we first got it. All the CFOs asked, okay, is this going to be part of the local, the local share component? We did not get a response until the day that we actually got the final aid state calculations. So essentially, the, we did get the three hundred thousand dollars in addition to the county, but when you add that additional, um, revenue for the Blueprint Coordinator, the, the local share that is above what we are required to receive was actually only a hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. So I just wanted to make note that, and also, looking at pre-K.
That's a positive, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, and let me just, I'll just add, as she was explaining, we got the official numbers. Like, it's never been as late as the numbers came. And so that was just the state getting us the official number. They gave us that preliminary number in February. Um, and normally, it comes much earlier than it did.
End of April.
End of April, and we didn't get until the end of June. So, um, I think it's, we all know that the state's working through it, just working through a tough budget cycle as well.
And then to note pre-K, because that was the only, from the local share, that was the only amount that was reduced. So according to pre-K, this number is just the amount that we are going to get as a school system. It was reduced about ten thousand dollars, because that is pertaining to private pre-K, where the county directly has to pay the state for that. So we don't have anything to do with that. So in total, we received, um, from the county, twenty-one million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars. And then we go down to our state revenues, as you can see, that's receiving a total amount of eleven million, seven hundred twenty-one dollars. Eleven million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars. Now, please note here, with non-public placements, that could change more or less. I decided this year, instead of just doing a hundred thousand dollars, because ultimately, as the trend has been, we do a placement of a hundred grand, but we have to go back for a budget amendment. So this is the same amount that we received last year, so we may have to come back to a budget amendment, more or less, if they give us.
Kind of the guesstimate of, of what one student would be?
Well, essentially, just the state share for their non-public placement, yeah.
Gotcha.
So what's highlighted in this blue here is Concentration of Poverty and TSI, Transitional Supplemental Instruction. Remember, even though this is unrestricted funds, those are still restricted for use. And then we have our other revenues. Now to note, of our other revenues, we use one million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars of our fund balance. That includes the contingency, the five hundred thousand dollar contingency, and the nine ninety-nine, six sixty, that essentially was remaining in our fund balance from the prior year. Please note that the other revenue sources, we do not, we did not include in our budget, so to speak. Um, so that is going to be trued up revenue. That includes the MAID grant, because even though we get eleven thousand dollars for our group insurance, as well as our workers' comp, we utilize that to address risk or any group insurance, um, issues to help with that. So that's restricted. The other, um, those revenue sources consist of the out-of-county living informal kinship care. So if there's a student that essentially, and I may, you know, Dr. McCommiss chime in with that one, because if there's a student that is from this county but going to another school, we, it's either we need to pay that other school, or that other school needs to pay us. And that revenue may fluctuate from year to year. And then another thing is our interest, um, on investment. So when our deposits come in, we do get interest from that from our bank. Um, so we decided to just kind of rub all those amounts, and then whatever is revenue, that will be trued up at the end.
Uh, question, you brought up the contingency fund. It was voted to use that ISO, it's already been used, correct?
Yes, that's part of that prior year's fund balance, right here.
And that was part of our vote, was that we were going to use.
Yes.
Yes.
So when would that, when should I look for that to go back into our?
When the final, the final financial statements for twenty twenty-five come out, and that will be in September.
Understood.
Well, not September, the October board meeting. September thirtieth is when our financial statements are due to the state, and then we present in October.
The process and the audits and all that, right?
Yeah, and all the recodes and reimbursements, right.
So that gives us a total of thirty-five million, twenty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars that we are anticipating to receive as revenue. We get to the next page, this is pretty much just tells you what was approved for fiscal year twenty-five. As far as expenses. This page here just tells you what has been approved for fiscal year twenty-six as it relates to the expenses. You look at the major, um, categories, including COP and TSI, it balances out with the thirty-five million, twenty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars. This is just a comparison of what we expended last year to this year, budget-wise, so you can review that. So after that, are there any questions?
I have one to like, just, the length of the document being forty-seven pages, is there any way to, I'll use this term, dumb it down for us where it's more condensed, to just like, how you just touched on a couple of points to where, uh, we can just get the meat and the potatoes, or meat and potatoes right off the back for the questions? Because something like this, I still would have to go home and comb through it, and.
Okay.
So last week, last month, the strategic, I mean, the facilities master plan, it was a hundred, what, a hundred and twenty-four pages? But that executives, I'm saying executive summary, I don't know what the exact word was, but you mean a couple of pages?
This is a lot to go through.
So essentially, what I can do is just get to the appendix, if you want me to do that, because that's the main, that's the main portion of this. The reason why, I was just thinking, not necessarily going through it in detail, but just showing, um, proof of thought. Um, but if you want me to condense, essentially, when you go through each of these, let me go back to this slide then. So this is your condensed everything, your meat and potatoes. So when you look at administration, we were expending one point eight million, mid-level, one, ten point three, and so on. So it tells you of that category, what we're expending in salary, contractual services, supplies, materials, other charges, equipment, and transfers. Transfers are non-public placements, so that's why you see in special education, the four hundred and twenty thousand, that is pertaining to special ed, and then Concentration of Poverty and TSI. So that is a snapshot of everything.
Yeah, no, I got you.
And then each category will show you the level of detail of what is being expended in each of those categories, with a description as well, so when you have time to go back and review, you'll be able to see all of that information. So we're going to skip down to, after those major categories, uh, showed you the cap, our fixed charges, keep scrolling here.
Because something like this, we'll get into like, I know I went through this through the budget, I don't know if anyone else did. You start looking at so many pages and so many numbers, it just looked like you stuck in the matrix and you can't really understand what's going on.
No, I understand, and I seen this, it was a typo in here, so I'm going to correct that with COP, but everything else is fine. Our restricted grants, just to point that out, when you go to that page, there is a detail about what each funding source entails and what it is used for. So that's something that we added. Our school construction fund, um, the local from the county, that is two million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars that they have set aside for us to start with school construction projects, with the middle school, Impact Food Service. That is a separate, uh, as you know, that is a separate funding source for food service and the details around that. Now, to get to the point of what is really important, this is really important, because in twenty seventeen, what I'm going to explain to you in the appendix is essentially how we need to budget for twenty twenty-seven. Afton Partners, as we have shared with you, was actually a grant through the AIB to assist us with allocating and looking at Maryland Blueprint. So from the financial standpoint, they assisted us with how we need to allocate our funding per the blueprint funding sources. When you go back to the revenues and where you see, uh, foundation, comp ed, special ed, uh, multilingual learners. What the budget should look like is, if the state gives us thirteen million dollars in foundation, you have to have a thirteen million dollar budget for foundation. If you happen to go over in foundation, you either need to have a fund balance to take care of the overage, move the expenses in another blueprint funding source, or ultimately, make some cuts and adjustments.
So we basically got a budget for what they say budgetful?
Essentially. While still budgeting for those major categories that we are required by law to do. So it's kind of a double thing that we need to do. So when you see item one here, that is a, so shout out to Afton, Lindsay and Kevin, who are points in contact. I want to give them an opportunity, because they were able to take what I gave them and put it in this beautiful presentation. So, um, at the end of the budget book, you would see item one, which is the fiscal year twenty-six. this beautiful presentation. So um, at the end of the budget book, you would see item one, which is the fiscal year twenty-six revenue by source. Uh, this navy blue is local. The darker green is what we're getting from the state. And of the pie, that little sliver is pretty much agent schools, what we have. And agent schools, we can only really use for our schools if there's any major maintenance issues that happen. Again, it's a reimbursable um, source of funding, so we have to expend the money first then get reimbursed. Item two, you'll see the category. So that's a pie graph that breaks down the categories. This yellow and blue is instructional salaries and fixed charges. So your teaching salaries and the benefits that go along with that. So you can see of the piece of the pie, that's your chunk. That's your chunk. Alright, I love this uh, diagram here that Afton put together because it looks at everything based on the major categories, what we have budgeted. Now, I will throw that out there, this is based on budget for twenty twenty-six, not actual. Okay, so what we have budgeted and planned, it's not based on actual, we'll see that at the end of fiscal year twenty-six. But for example, I do like to note again, fixed charges and instructional salaries are a big proportion of our budget. Instructional salaries you see is twenty-nine point four percent, followed up with our fixed charges, twenty-four point three percent. That's the cost of people. And anything that's under one percent, that's what we're really spending on, student health, student services. Um, capital outlay, that's more so our agent schools and asbestos, um, asbestos cleaning. But this will show you, anything that's above that one percent essentially includes salary as well. So administration has salary, operations have salary, maintenance have salary. So that's a good, I just like that chart to be honest. Break it down. We go to item, um, this should be four, but essentially we go to this next graph that Afton put together. And here again, you will see where that's instructional salaries, but this graph outlines the location. So if you look at Rock Hall, that blue is instructional salaries, same thing going down to the middle school, high school and so forth. Down to central office, this is salaries too. Um, but they broke, they have broken everything down based on that school level.
It's interesting, or I'm sure there's an explanation, but I don't know what it is. So I'm looking at central office and whereas in all the schools, the biggest part is the actual instructional salaries, which obviously we don't have instructional salaries in central office, but we still have salaries.
Yep.
So why is it, is it just coded a different way as fixed charges?
No, because essentially fixed charges encompass not just the teacher salary, um, not just the teachers' benefits, but everybody's benefits essentially. Um, but when it comes down, breaking to the fixed charges with central office, that is what has been allocated for those uh, employees considered at the central office level for their fixed charges.
And question, you keep saying, uh, forgive me for saying Afghan, F?
Afton Partners.
So what exactly do they do?
Yeah, so the um, state, the AIB for blueprint, um, has paid for every school system to have consultants to help us work to, to get our budgets in the model that they want. Afton is the consultants who were uh, the state hired for us. They also are working with Dorchester, I believe, and I think one of the
A couple of other counties.
Yeah, at least one of the western Maryland counties as well. So there is uh, I think three or four consultants that the state hired to support school systems in this process.
So this is the first time this has been broken down like this?
Yes, and we're doing, we're bringing this forward so that we're beginning to build everyone's um, understanding of how to look at the budget in the frame that the blueprint wants us to start looking at the budget, right? Uh, because we all know that uh, we're, we'll be pursuing the um,
waiver.
Waiver, thank you. I know it's getting, it's after nine, my brain stops working at eight minutes ago at ten. Um, and uh, we were working through this process cause we wanted to kind of see how close we were to that um, minimum school funding, cause we know our budget's so uh, lean that we were like, we might actually already be in it just because of the nature of how lean we are. Uh, but we're working with Afton and, and we agreed, we wanted to bring this forward so that uh, we're beginning to build everyone's understanding, cause next year's budget book is gonna have to be in that.
I wonder why we're getting this, because most of this information we already have when you presented the budget to us.
Correct, correct.
On more than one occasion, I thought that.
We worked hard on that budget as a team, all of us, this board, the, the employees, we worked hard on that. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Stewart, I'm sorry.
And this graph here just shows the same of what is in the line graph above. Essentially what we're spent, how much we're, have budgeted for each location here. This here is just food for thought, understanding on blueprint and the timeline for that. Essentially what you, to take from here is that twenty-seven, we will have to meet that minimum school funding level of seventy-five twenty-five. This page is very important, but I do wanna add a footnote here. Um, when I'm looking, when I actually went back to look at what we expense as far as central office, the seventy-five twenty-five minimum is not as simple as seventy-five percent of your expenses go out to the schools. If it was, that's looking at it in the aggregate. I'm throwing it out there, cause I think if they look at it that way, I think most schools, majority would probably be
Already there.
Already there. When you take central office, they are considering student transportation at central office. However, I'm not sure um, essentially why, but student transportation is fully state-funded, so that could be a reason. But if I back out student transportation, but we have budget and just leave what we are spending for central office, plus the depot, that's about seven point one million dollars, that's twenty percent of the budget. So in technicality, if we were to look at this in the aggregate, we would be at eighty-twenty, school already meeting this minimum school required, requirement. If you add transportation back and put it all together with what's at central office and depot, we're about twenty-six percent. So essentially
Really close.
We're meeting the requirement. If they look at it in the aggregate, the issue is they're not looking at it like that. So I just thought I'd throw that out there so you all are aware.
For advocacy.
Yes.
That's part of the.
So essentially, page forty-six is what you want to study and get familiar with. Uh, what you see here in item five is what is the target? So when you look at Galena, for example, you see the school and the blueprint funding sources on top. If we take Galena, we are supposed to expend two million dollars in foundation, essentially in Galena, that's the requirement. Okay, when we go down here to um, item six, what we're actually budgeting at Galena is one point six in foundation. So when you get down to item seven, we're actually underfunding Galena essentially per blueprint. That has to apply across the board. So foundation as a whole, the way that it looks now, um, what I can say is, and I wanna pull up this simultaneously, because this graph here shows you the dollar amount. The graph at the bottom, um, the chart at the bottom shows you the percentage. So if we look at Galena, we're pretty much meeting foundation by um, we're not meeting foundation, we're shy of about nineteen percent. So essentially nineteen percent more has to be put into Galena from foundation. So anything here on this graph, anything over a hundred percent, we're meeting. Or overly meeting, anything under that, we still have work to do. And that's where the waiver component comes in. But here's the thing. I'm under budget in pre-K, essentially. That's what, let's look at the total, the two hundred seventy-eight thousand. I can move some comp ed money to there if it's related to pre-K. But if it's not related to pre-K, you're going to have to make a cut. Unless you can justify the expense to be allowable in pre-K.
Right, um, yeah, well, I think, you know, bottom line, here's where.
So you're telling us we might have to still make cuts?
Well, it, 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 it's, we have to, one, if enrollment drops, yes, two, um, depending upon the flexibility they give us. This is an example of, of like, they are micromanaging every single dollar. And that's where it's strangleholdings school systems. That's why, like Carroll County, for example, you know, they had their whole big thing because they had a number of schools where they didn't have high numbers of students that would bump up their comp compensatory ed, right, which kind of can help you uh, ease things a little bit, right, gives you a little flexibility there. Uh, so that's the thing, a- and as Ms. Stewart was saying, if they were to look at the minimum school funding, you know, conceptually, right? And I know I'm oversimplifying here. If the concept is, we wanna make sure dollars are where kids are and we say seventy-five cents of every dollar needs to be at a school where children are, right? In the big aggregate, we're there, right? Because the bulk of our, what do, what was it, eighty percent of our money is in our schools, right? Um, but they're slicing it um, down deeper than that. There, the reason that they've offered this waiver fundamentally is they can't really figure out how to measure the level of specificity that they want.
We've learned the waiver, right?
We, yeah, we are in the process of doing that. We wanted to finish this book because we actually wanted to see, cause I was wagering that I thought we were actually probably already in the model, you know, um, but it's, it's the level of specificity that they want and I don't, you know, I don't.
And the waiver just giving us more time to comply with they want. It's not like the waiver's gonna let us play around.
It, it doesn't give us more money, it just gives us more time.
For implementation, alright.
Yeah, and um, but to, to give you a sense of like, if we were to take our current budget and have to force it into that model, this is how kind of our report on that, our report card on that would be. So that, I mean, you know, myself and the other superintendents, I think the number one thing is they've, they need to allow us more flexibility with this, right? Go to the aggregate because um, again, I'm, I'm being hyper theoretical here, but let's say I'm uh, multi, you know, I'm, I'm a Spanish speaker and I have special needs, right? Well, the dollars that I'm supposed to get, you can see in each of those categories. But what happens when I'm also a family experiencing homelessness? And um, well, maybe, you know, and, and we move, right? And I start the year at Galena and now I'm in Rock Hall, right? Those dollars during the school year aren't gonna flow to Rock Hall, but now Rock Hall has to absorb that load. It's, that's the kind of flexibility that in our traditional model, you know, the Rock Hall principal comes and says, you know what, I just got three more Spanish-speaking students. Can you help me get an extra ESOL teacher? Can you help me find the money for ESOL para? You know, and I, you know, I go to Alisa and say, okay, let's comb through every single category and pull my pennies together and be like, you know what, I couldn't get a teacher, but I, I got enough money to get a para for you. Um, I'm not gonna have that kind of flexibility and under that. And that's, I think, I think it's an unforeseen what they call consequences, right? Unintended problems.
Maybe unintended, I don't know if it was unforeseen, because that's the beaten up on the state, but there is no, that's, I made it so important, there's no local control.
Right, right, exactly.
And I think it's appropriate to be critical of the state.
Yes.
Who knows this whole system better than, than the, than the local school system, you know?
Well, obviously the state think they do, so.
Right. So I think this is, you know, Ms. McKenzie, you always talk about like, you know, acknowledging the things that are working and acknowledging the things that we need to say, you know what, theory to practice is not functional. And I think this is an example of theory to practice is not functional. Nice idea. In reality, it, it really just ties our hands in a way that's not helpful.
Well, it's not, the thing is, it's not productive, it's not functional. And all the good things in theory are not applicable, because your hands are tied.
Right, right.
And it doesn't seem like the state is trying to close that gap to try to help, I guess, foster in a new law, so to speak.
Right, I think.
Right, they're not willing to evaluate. That's, that's the point, you know, that, that ongoing evaluation process, what's working, what's not working. And so the, the making minor adjustments doesn't have to be that complicated. They make it complicated, but it really doesn't have to be.
Right.
There's plenty of well-educated people who know the job, who are saying, this really should be, it should be this way.
Right.
And the thing is.
Right, 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 right.
Everybody is saying that.
Yeah, right, it's not just little county says you, you're being like, there goes, everybody is saying that. Yeah. So, I mean, so we shall see where this year's legislation goes. Um, but this, to me right now, the, 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 the main things about the blueprint is we need greater flexibility around the minimum school funding model. And then the other thing is they've gotta really figure out how to curb some of the national board certification. Not that I don't want our people to have that certification, but the extra money that goes with that, there's not a, a, an equivalent funding stream, you know, because that's really going to run up salaries.
It's just kind of ironic that the, the, the thought behind the blueprint is we wanna make Maryland's school system the best in the state. But guess what, we're not gonna allow you to actually make it the best in your own school.
We don't really trust you to know what to do, is, yeah, that's.
But I will say, I did sign up, just if anybody else wants to join, I could send the email, Stronger Schools is having a July Maryland Education Roundtable. It gives anyone an opportunity to be able to express their concerns. And so I, I already signed up for it.
I'm uh,
Right.
Anybody else wants to?
Now they continue to, I guess, we beating up the state today.
They don't care.
I'm, I'm, I was, well, I consider myself, I'm still a county captain or county leader for Strong Schools. And actually my nonprofit has partnered with them for the last three years. There has been a lot of fluctuation in the leadership at the executive level that I think isn't transitioning well to the counties and also the state implementation. And I think it's a lot of confusion there as well, from what I've been seeing as being actively engaged in that, so. I used to attend those meetings, I kind of doubt back a little bit because I feel like I'm not getting anything to be productive here, if that makes sense.
Well, I, I think I, you know, I think it will take lots of advocacy across the state. Um, and, and one like the specific things, that's what, you know, I always try to help us know, like, we don't need to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but let's acknowledge the things that really, like, this has gotta be figured out.
But on, on a lighter note to, and cause that's really, this is the, the lighter note is, we do have a lot where we're over achieving in there. So really your, your high points is um, ML at the middle school and then pre-K at Galena when looking at this chart. Everything else, um, I'm confident that if we come together as a team, we can really align our budget to what the seventy-five twenty-five percent. So we're not as, this honestly is just a first read of me going through every account, giving it to Afton. They offered me a few suggestions and we adjusted. So just at my level, um, we're close getting there. Once we meet as a team, I'm more than confident we will be okay and everything will be fine. That pretty much is it for twenty twenty-six. Any question, do you have any more questions?
Thank you.
Grand piano donation update.
So I know when I brought this for, for the piano donation, I did not have an exact uh, number. And essentially still do not, but still wanting to bring it back to the board because I did say that I um, wanted the board to know where we stand with that. So essentially uh, when I think Ms. Bortz took it to get an estimated value or to retrieve some type of estimated value, essentially the piano is worth twenty-five to fifty percent of what the current selling price of the piano and the current selling price of that piano is twelve thousand dollars. Um, and then just to note, the tuning of the piano was a hundred thousand dollars and then moving of the piano was nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. We are grateful for this donation. This was just for information only, to just give the board an update of the value of the donation.
Question with that, because I didn't ask last month. Who, who's gonna play this piano, Ms. Bortz or the students?
I believe it's for the students.
So are the students want to learn how to play it?
I don't know exactly, I would assume so.
Cause it's part of music. They give a donation just to have the music teacher uh, or special guest come in and play it, it's, it's, it's not really a donation that's.
Right, it goes into our inventory of instruments. And so the answer would be both, right? If the teacher is modeling something on the piano, she may be one. You may have a student who's practicing, you may have, you know, like when we think about the school play, I know I saw this.
We used to have, I mean, back in our day, Mr. Tyson would be playing on the piano.
So I mean, it essentially goes into our inventory and then we use it depending upon.
It would be great to come into a school uh, play or anything of that nature and an actual student play it. And a lot of times when you see the keyboard or the Casio fix, it's the music teacher. it's the music teacher, which is understandable, but when you get a donation like that, I, I just feel like it should be for students as well.
Sure, yeah, I wa, I wouldn't disagree.
Alrighty, moving on to the gate receipts and admissions policy.
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McCall, my school board members. Um, as you're aware, we have been talking about this for quite some time. Um, tonight, I am bringing some proposed changes forward. Uh, it's a first read, so it's for information only. But as we have discussed, one of the main concerns was with policy DFEA, um, specifically, or surrounding the current language of the, um, of the ability of the superintendent to give people free entry into the games who have made significant contributions towards the school system. There's also been some concerns over the inconsistencies of, of who has, you know, been allowed to enter for free and who has not. So tonight, um, what you have in front of you, um, is a proposed new policy of DFE, which is the gate receipts. Um, gate receipts and admissions, it's the existing policy, the first two paragraphs. And then what we're proposing is we retire DFEA, which was the policy that lists, you know, who comes in for free, and bring an element of that over with the three proposed groups that would get in for free. And they are all Kent County public school employees, Kent County Board of Education members, and then any individual with an MPSSAA issued, uh, commission pass. Removing the concern over the people who make the significant contributions. I'll open it for questions, thoughts, comments.
Remind me what the MPSSAA?
It is the Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association. It's the state governing body for inter-school athletics.
I will say one thing, just to make sure we're being transparent with everything. Once we adopt this or it goes into effect, the people at the gate, uh, it has to be some type of accountability to make sure these things are actually, uh, uh, going to happen. Because essentially the only people that should be walking past should have a public school badge or that little green pad that says all access, so to speak. Uh, it shouldn't, it should be also some type of way to maybe stamp or wrist around your hand so that way we can watch that, because ultimately, even though it's a small amount, with the way we just went through our budget, it's, every dollar counts for us right now.
Sure, absolutely, um, Ms. Queen, that's a good point.
That's all, I'm happy with this.
Thank you. Alright.
Stay tight.
I'm too, it's a tight case, yes, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I know it, I thought I remembered reading that it said that each school's principal will say, will there be an oper, and maybe it'll be up to each school to, to do this, but I think about it more at the high school. This is an issue that I think Mr. Queen actually maybe had supported or at least talked about, like, uh, like a family pass or a season pass, or are we looking into any of that? Or are we just gonna talk about event, each event individually?
So that is definitely something that we still have to discuss, whether or not we're gonna offer a, you know, seasonal, um, pass. There are gonna be further discussions with this because, you know, one of the other things we want to consider is moving to the, uh, digitalized um, system as well, you know, as, as society in general is just starting to move to a more cashless society. And then the system will then become automated.
Yes.
Which I think would also take care of some of the-
Agreed, agreed.
Inconsistency concerns.
Agreed.
So.
Uh, so, I'll be brought back.
Yep, so we'll bring it back, um, if there's nothing else that you want to see done, then we'll probably just add it to the consent agenda in August. Alright, thank you for all of your, uh, collaboration on this, I-
Yes, thank you for knowing it was a hot topic. Because this was like, what, three months now?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
The MAB LSA appointment.
Yes, so I will, um, just, I'll bring this forward. So the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, uh, they're Legal Services Association, which is what the LSA stands for. Um, we, every school system needs to appoint, or Kent County needs to appoint two representatives for that, um, LSA Board of Directors. Um, one is the director who attends on our behalf, and the alternate, of course, is the alternate in case for some reason the director cannot attend. The appointment is for a two-year term, and appointees may include board members, superintendents, attorneys, and, and school system employees. Um, the, the director, or the board meets, uh, the LSA board meets four times a year, either virtually or in MAB's office. Uh, primarily the director is the one who will attend for us, but if for some reason our director can't, then we'll ask our alternate. I'd like to bring forward that I recommend Mr. Dan Hushen to serve as our director, and Ms. McGee as, uh, in her role as board president as the alternate. So, uh, that we're represented in the legal, MAB's legal services association.
I got one quick question with this one. Um, for, for Trish, because the terms are two years. Um, in two years, Trish may not be sitting on this side of the table, so how would we?
Just bring it forward with a new replacement.
And as, as, as you'll see, the alternate has been vacant, there hasn't been anybody there because Joe, Joe's been gone, so just, it's just the cycle of things.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, I mean, Mr. Hushen goes reliably, and I mean, so not that we wouldn't tap you in, but-
Don't tap me in, I think we have the correct names on file.
Alrighty, so this, is this for action, Dr. McCall?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, so, uh, the administration recommends Mr. Dan Hushen serve as the MAB LSA director, and Trish Vicki as the alternate director, is there a motion?
I can make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. McKenzie, a second, are there any comments or more questions? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
So, three, four, and, excuse me, three in favor and one abstention. Alrighty, the la, it looks like close to the last thing is the Citizens Advisory Committee membership appointment.
Yes, so, um, I shared, uh, with the board in closed session, the applications for the CAC, and I, um, bring forward, propose that we accept those applications for this next year of CAC.
Alrighty, so looking for a motion to accept the new citizen advisory committee members.
A motion that we accept the new appointees for the CAC, Citizen Advisory Committee.
Has made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. McKenzie is second, is there any questions or comments? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dorsey?
Aye.
Okay, it's, it's unanimous. Alrighty, the wide audience we have sitting here, is, is there any public participation, Ms. Manley?
Bring it over.
So just a reminder, the Kent County Board of Education will meet with the Kent County Commissioners on Tuesday, July fifteenth, at two o'clock at Kent County Middle School to discuss Kent County Public Schools capital projects. After that, the next monthly board meeting will be held on Monday, August eleventh, beginning at five thirty PM with the open session, open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at six thirty PM. The meetings will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, five, six, oh, eight, Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland. Um, why does it say?
Yeah, we have the-
New agenda item. Okay, gotcha, alrighty, uh, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Dorsey's made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Alrighty, Mr. Queen is seconded, any conversation, anybody want to extend this meeting any longer?
No.
Alrighty, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.